The time is now 6:30 PM. We will now call this special public meeting of the Board of Trustees of UMBLE Independent School District to order. First order of business is adjourned in a closed session. A closed session of the Board will now be held on matters contained in the notice for this meeting. Should the Board determine that any final action, final decision, or final vote be required with regard to any matter considered in such a closed session, then final action, final decision, or final vote will be made upon reconvening of this public meeting in open session. The time is now 6:30. The time is now 7:08, and we will now reconvene into open session. Thank you for joining us tonight. The meetings of the Board are open to the public but are not a meeting of the public. UMBLE ISD Board of Trustees meet monthly in a regular meeting to receive reports from staff and take action from recommendations of the superintendent. The Board receives the agenda and all supporting documentation several days in advance of the regular meetings, which allows us to ask and receive answers to many of our questions in advance of the regular meeting. Therefore, lengthy discussions are not always necessary on every agenda item. But as a Board, we do have the appropriate knowledge and preparation for responses regarding the content of the meeting tonight. And remember, there are students and other guests present. To maintain decorum, respectful behavior is expected. Disruptive behavior and/or comments will not be allowed. And with that, our first item, the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Grabowski, would you lead us this evening?
I would be honored. By Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag.
Honored Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to these Texas, one state, under God, one and invisible.
Now please join me in a moment of prayer. Thank you, may be seated. Okay, moving to our next agenda item, commendations and recognitions. I'm going to turn to Dr. Fagan. Can you please introduce tonight's inspiring moments?
I'd love to. Well, welcome, everyone. It's great to have you here. It's almost Thanksgiving. I was out at Ross Sterling Middle School today, and the teachers were like, "We're waiting for break." So, it was good, though. It was all good. Let's see. "UMBLE ISD offers students opportunities to take their learning beyond the four walls of a classroom. Student athletic trainers get hands-on experience while learning about health-related careers." In tonight's inspiring moment, we meet current students and UMBLE ISD graduates who have benefited from being student athletic trainers.
Well, my little brother, we're 16 months apart, and he was born with severe asthma. He has been in and out of hospitals for very, very bad asthma attacks. And so, he's grown up with respiratory therapists around him treating him his whole life. And so, I was kind of like, "That's pretty cool. I've never heard of one of those." And he speaks so highly of them. He's like, "I love my respiratory therapists. They make me feel better." And I was like, "I think I can do that." I wanted to do something that's very specialized.
So, students that are interested in going either the athletic training path or towards more medical professionals for orthopedists, nursing, anything in those lines, we try to make sure that we give them the very basics of what they would need, the very basics of anatomy, physiology, in a hands-on perspective. For our athletic training students, they get a little bit more out of it, the ones that are interested in athletic training, just because we're very geared for that because that's what we're doing. But for anybody that's interested in the other side of the medical fields, they're at least getting a good base knowledge of anatomy and physiology, and then getting some perspectives that most kids may not get without going through a program like this.
You get to know the backgrounds, ins and outs, of different aspects of the medical field. If someone is kind of on the edge about it, if they don't know if they want to go into that, I would definitely say, "Go for it." You don't lose anything. You gain experience. You gain connections. You gain so much. I loved it. You get so much out of it.
My plan was always to work in a hospital. I didn't really know what factor I wanted to yet, but by joining the athletic training program here, I have learned that the rehabilitation process after an injury is what really excites me about the program, so I've decided to do that with the rest of my life.
It's really important that they help me out. I go in there, they're open-minded, they listen to what I have to say, and they help me out with treatment, whatever I need. Got on a bike, get some ice, whatever I need, they help me with it. I'm really appreciative because without them, I mean, I've been injured multiple times. Without them, I wouldn't be able to bounce back so fast. I really appreciate them for real.
We do everything from physical therapy, emergency care, hydration, everything. They are involved in every aspect of an athletic team's success, behind the scenes. But they're involved in so much more than what people see, other than carrying a water bottle and things like that.
I think it's a pretty cool experience. They get treated really well, and they also get a chance to be around athletes and help them out, just giving them whatever they need, giving them help with their tape, with their stretching. So, it's been good to have them around. I can tell you this, when they're not around, we miss them. So, for our training staff to send us two good, reliable ones that we can count on has been an asset for us.
Any student that's interested in any medical field can find value in being involved in our student aid program.
I used to want to be a psychiatrist. Then I was like, "Well, for more experience, I should be an athletic trainer and see what I really want to do, what career path I want to go down."
I was new to UMBLE ISD, so I went to a counselor, and I told her that I had an interest for sports. And so, she introduced me to the athletic training program here, and it was the best thing that ever happened to me. I never knew that you can bring it to collegiate or to professional, and I'm so excited to have my life going on with athletic training. And I'm very excited for being an athletic trainer for Texas Tech.
We're open to freshmen through seniors. We try to welcome anybody in at any point during their high school career. They join us as a PE credit. Our technical class is called PE Trainer. When they're in here, they'll get an educational standpoint because of the teaching moments that we do throughout the year, but they'll also get the hand-on experience throughout practices, games, and then the daily tasks that we have to do with daily.
What a great opportunity for our students. We love to have opportunities for students to connect in UMBLE ISD in every single different interest area, and this is definitely one that many of our students like. The stars of our video are not with us here tonight because they are out at basketball games and football practices and helping our athletes and coaches while performing their duties as student athletic trainers. But let's give them a warm round of applause. We really do appreciate all the work they do to support our athletics programs. I also know that sometimes students who are not athletes visit the trainers for various things, too, so they're actually a support to our entire campus. Next, UMBLE ISD values arts education. Here with some exciting news is Sandra Newton, Assistant Director of Fine Arts.
Good evening, President Scarfo, members of the Board, Dr. Fagan. I'm Sandra Newton, and I'm fortunate enough to serve UMBLE ISD as Assistant Director of Fine Arts, where I have the opportunity to work with primarily our visual art programs. The visual arts improve student cognition, critical thinking skills, communication skills, concentration skills, listening skills, leadership skills, problem-solving skills, and self-confidence. The visual arts engage students in their education, make difficult concepts easier to understand, promote a growth mindset, deepen cultural and self-understanding, compel students to empathize with others, and allow students to reflect on the human condition, thus providing significant positive impacts on academic and social development. All of these findings are supported in a 2019 research report, "Investigating Effects of Arts Education Experiences: Experimental Evidence from Houston's Arts Access Initiative." The UMBLE ISD Visual Arts Team has received the Texas Art Education Association District of Distinction designation. Only 16 school districts have achieved this honor for five consecutive years. Every year, the award has been available. This places UMBLE ISD visual art programs in the top 1.3% of all visual art programming in Texas. Through the District of Distinction Award, the Texas Art Education Association recognizes districts that met or exceed a rigorous 14-point rubric. The rubric examined UMBLE ISD's visual art programs through participation in state and local exhibitions, contests, community events, and engagement, field experience, community service, and collaboration with other content areas. Congratulations to the UMBLE ISD family, to the students, the visual art educators, campus and district administration, and our supportive UMBLE ISD school board. I would now like to ask the art educators in the audience to join me up front for a photo.
We were talking about athletic trainers connecting kids to school. Now, we have the art teachers connecting kids to school. So, when they bring that rodeo art stuff, wow. That is amazing, right? Everybody in the audience is like, "Yeah." It's incredible. I wish I'd have brought with me the little stat about the percent of the honor bands that were UMBLE ISD students in middle school. It was on Twitter, and it blew me away, but now I can't remember what it was, so I'm not going to tell Fib and Guess. If anybody knows, it's a bonus question. Okay. While we're having this little transition here, next, we're going to have Jerry Monbaron is going to come forward, and she is going to present this month's superstaffers.
UMBLE ISD employees go above and beyond every single day to meet the needs of our students, and we want to recognize these employees for their important work in keeping UMBLE ISD great. Each month, campuses and departments select an individual to be honored as a superstaffer for their outstanding work in advancing student achievement. A drawing is held, and three honorees receive additional recognition at the school board meeting, including a gift card thanks to an award sponsor. And this month's sponsor is Valo Trower from Headquarters Studio. And it's a barber shop on First Street in UMBLE. Let me tell you a little bit about Valo real quick. He's a very generous business owner in our community. He often gives free haircuts to our students and our families in need, and he also provides school supplies. He has a great event. He had one this year at UMBLE High School where he gave out over 1,300 backpacks. So, please join me in thanking Valo as he comes up to help us give a few a's. Thank you, Valo. Okay, so being honored as tonight's elementary superstaffer from Green Tree Elementary, Melissa Ebarb. And Ms. Rodriguez, her principal, is here. And so, let me tell you a little bit about Melissa. Melissa's always willing to jump in and assist when needed. Recently, she helped our fifth-grade team by taking over three relay classes all at once. With efficiency and ease, she manages a team of interventionists to make sure that all 71 reading assessments were completed and put in the UMBLE portal by the deadline. We greatly appreciate her professionalism, her flexibility, and her commitment to always doing what is best for students. Being honored tonight as our secondary superstaffer is Adalina Caballero from UMBLE Middle School. And joining her tonight is her Assistant Principal, Amy Suchadoll. Thank you, Amy. So, let me tell you about Ms. C., as she's affectionately known. She goes above and beyond to reach students where they are in her math class, and she inspires them to be their best. She holds tutoring sessions daily in which her entire classroom is full of kids. So, anyone who can get 26th graders to stay after school to work on math has a pretty special gift. And speaking of special, so we have some special news to share. So, this year, Ms. C. co-coordinated the Academic UIL Competition for UMBLE Middle School, which happened to occur just this past weekend. And I'm proud to report that UMBLE Middle School placed third out of all 10 middle schools in UMBLE ISD. Okay, being honored as our support superstaffer tonight is Director of Systems Integration for Technology Services, William Lang. So, let me tell you about Will. Will was integral in the partnership with multiple departments across the district to ensure data collection and analysis for UMBLE ISD's first TIA data submission. Will coded a data warehouse from scratch to allow for in-depth analysis of many layers of data. He sacrificed countless hours of his personal time to ensure the warehouse was built with fidelity while also meeting his deadline. Without ever complaining, but always focused on the end goal of identifying and rewarding our best teachers, Will built a tool that met and surpassed expectations to fulfill an immediate need but that will also impact UMBLE ISD for years to come. We are honored to have William Lang on our UMBLE ISD team. Congratulations.
Okay, just to continue the theme, UIL Academic Competition, UMBLE Middle School, connecting kids to school, third place. So, congratulations to all of you guys for being wonderful UMBLE ISD staff members. And Will Lang, he does like magic and computer stuff. That's my technical term. So, that concludes our accommodations for tonight. Thank you.
That's pretty technical. All right, next, Item F, Questions and Comments by Patrons or Employees of the District Regarding Agenda Items or Any Other Matters. The next item, Public Comment. Board encourages comments from citizens of the district or from district employees. Anyone wishing to speak, either as an individual or as a representative of a group, may do so following the procedure outline on the agenda. The Board asks that comments pertain to education issues. Remember, the Board may not discuss or act upon any issues that are not posted on our agenda for tonight's meeting. If an issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, the Board will defer discussion until the appropriate time during the meeting. We have 16 speakers, so I'm going to do what we did the other night when we had a lot. I'm going to ask four to come forward, and Ms. Mount will help you there, and one will go to the podium, and three will be in the bullpen, if you will. So, first up, Deanie Allen, Eric Lacy, Kristin Garcia, and Susan Pollard, if you would
I am Deanie Allen, Reading Specialist and Dyslexia Specialist. Thank you so much to the Board for voting for a change in reading instruction. In the last few years, all the elementary teachers, even the math, took the 100-hour Texas Reading Academy. They learned of the components of evidence-based reading instruction that really works for all students. The phonics program that has been implemented is a very good first step, but it is not enough. Now, our teachers need training to get up to speed on each part of successful reading instruction. You know, when corporations want change, they hire an outside facilitator to manage the transition and ensure success. There are educational consultants who have helped other districts in Texas. Consultants inform people at all levels of the benefits of evidence-based teaching. They have helped districts choose effective and best programs that meet their needs. They have trained administrators and teachers in best practices. They have helped districts choose monitoring programs. They help, they advise, they do not tell. Please consider an outside educational facilitator to manage the transition to a new reading program and ensure success. Tomorrow, I will send you more information by email about successful transitions who have helped other Texas districts.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
Good evening. My name is Pastor Eric Lacy. I just want to thank you all for your vote, supporting the clinic on last month. The teenage father in me thanks you. The coach that had students and represented those students that could not pay for physicals when I was teaching public school, they thank you. The True Love Childcare Director, Owner, CEO that represents so many underprivileged families that represent UMBLE ISD, as I talk with a lot of my families, they thank you as well. I want to just appreciate the partnership that you guys are embarking upon because partnerships, I feel like, are the bedrock of our country. And so, I want to encourage you to not just consider that partnership, but there are some other partnerships that we can all consider, as well as partnerships with early childhood learning. There are some availabilities out there, and I just want you to consider that. But I do want to first thank you for your vote, and that makes me grateful for Thanksgiving. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Pastor.
Good evening. My name is Kristin Garcia, and I am the nurse at Atascocita Middle School. I was kind of under the impression this was going to be done during closed session as it's a personnel matter, but here I am. I'm here to dispute my...
Ms. Garcia, I just wanted to remind you, though, we cannot use personnel individuals' names or positions in your comments.
It's me. Well, that's my question, because in the bylaws, it states that it should have been done in personal and closed session, but it's not. And I put my name on the comments, so I'm kind of confused at why it's being done here. Okay. Okay, all right. So, I'm here to discuss what I think is wrongful termination that is being decided on by the Board tonight. I want to start with, you know, I have a principal this year who has created a hostile work environment for me to the point where I'm not allowed to go to the restroom without notifying somebody, where I have been writing from him that I'm not allowed to talk to anybody on my campus unless it's clinic-related. Things have progressed from there to where last week, I had a student with an injury on my campus, and I am being falsely accused of that while there's video evidence and a police report, number 20232054, that gives more detailed information on why that student had to go to the emergency room that did not involve me. I have my own documentation and facts that are being distorted by health services and by my own principal. I have in writing facts, plenty of facts, that nobody has taken the time to look at. I have not had time to escalate this to the superintendent's office because I had been banned from speaking for over a week and a half. A clinic audit was done on me without my knowledge, and things were used against me. And, you know, I just want to ask the Board to consider letting this go back to the superintendent and having me involved actually in the investigation that's going on and the falsehoods that are presented against me. I take my job very seriously, and I think you do, too. And...
Yeah. I understand. You were made aware of the grievance process, but you...
No, I was not. I'm not going to pay attention to any of this, and I haven't been able to take it up because I have been told not to speak to anybody in the district since November 3rd. I have it in writing.
Okay. Yeah.
I'm sorry. And I did that by...
Mr. Scarfo, I think that concludes the speaker's time.
Next, Ms. Susan Pollard.
Oh, so, yep. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Susan Pollard, and I volunteer with an organization that educates and promotes secure storage of firearms called Be Smart. Be Smart takes the approach that it's always the adult's responsibility to prevent children's access to guns. Teaching gun safety to children is important, but it's a precaution and not a guarantee. And I want to thank the district for acting so quickly to get secure storage information out to the families and telling them the importance of securing firearms in the home and in cars so children don't gain access, and also the opportunity to be involved in district events and table having one-to-one conversations with parents and guardians as well. Firearms are now the leading cause of death for children. 4.6 million American children live in a home with at least one loaded but unsecured gun. Texas unfortunately rates highest in the country in unintentional shootings when a child accesses an unsecured gun and unintentionally shoots themselves or someone else. Over 700 children living in America die by gun suicide every year, and secure storage can play such a crucial role in preventing those deaths. While there are many responsible gun owners, about half of all gun owners do not secure firearms. So, the importance of what you're doing, getting the information out, is so critical. SMART actually is an acronym that stands for Secure All Weapons, Model Responsible Behavior, Ask About the Presence of Guns When Your Children Go to Other People's Homes, Recognizing the Roles of Guns in Suicide, and Telling Others to Secure the Weapons. So, again, I just want to take the opportunity to thank you all for acting quickly and for us to work together on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pollard. Okay, and now, if I'd ask the next four speakers to come up, Pastor Clint Horn, Jerry Davis, Stephen Hatch, and Holly Matherly, if you could make your way up to the front.
Good evening. I just wanted to...
Good evening. I just wanted to come, Pastor Clint Horn, no agenda, but simply to take the time out to come by and stop and to thank this board. It is a daunting task to first and foremost, put your name on the ballot to run for this seat, but it's even a more daunting task to sit in that seat and to go through all the things that is brought to your plate. I commend each and every one of you. I just wanted to stop by to encourage you, not on just recent decisions and votes that have been made, but all the ones. Many times, there are decisions that are made, and I don't believe or feel that there is anyone that is on this board that desires for bad for our children in this district. I believe that you all desire good. Sometimes, that path may be different than some of us would desire or perceive, but in the end, we all are hoping that that path will lead to the great district that it has become and will continue to be. I just simply ask that when those decisions are made, that we always try to remember to set aside politics, set aside outside people that are not invested in this community, and focus mainly on the children and also these great teachers that we have in this great district. I believe you all are doing an outstanding job. I wanted to leave, and I always like to leave with a quote John Maxwell said, "The pessimists complains about the win, the optimists expect it to change. The leader adjusts the sails." Those pessimists are those that are on social media that never show up at a meeting. The optimists are those that are sitting right here, including myself, that come that we're expecting the change. You all are the leaders, and I'm praying that you all continue to be the leaders and continue to adjust the sails. God bless you.
Thank you, Pastor. Mr. Hatch?
All right, I get to follow the pastor. That's great. My name is Stephen Hatch. I'm the Executive Director of Operations for Holt Construction, based right here in Houston, Texas. First, I'd like to thank the staff and the board tonight for recognizing the change order that's before you on the consent agenda. It's very encouraging, although a very small piece of the puzzle, to see some resolution on some of the open items specific to the multipurpose rooms that we're working through. As it pertains to the legal matter at hand, I would like to propose that we begin discussing certain aspects in smaller, more bite-sized chunks, if you will. The totality of this claim encompasses many very complex issues that will need to be sorted through. However, there are other aspects that could be very simple to analyze and come to resolution on. For the time being, I would propose that we set aside a portion of the claim that deals with labor, general conditions, things along those lines that the delays have caused, and focus more on escalations from our trade partners and materials that Holt has funded, already in good faith to keep these projects moving forward for the benefit of the students, the community, and the teachers. An example of this might be concrete. For example, concrete's not an item you can pre-purchase. You effectively pay a strike price for the concrete when it's poured. As a result of delays through these projects and other factors, the concrete cost of this project has risen nearly $200,000. It should be fairly simple for us to sit down, analyze, understand how that came about, and what we could do about it to come to a resolution that's beneficial to all. Several other material-related escalations are similar to concrete. In previous discussions we've had with some of the staff and certain members of the board at that time, we provided nearly 800 pages of backup to identify these issues and begin those discussions. All I'm asking tonight, and all that being said, I would just ask the board and the staff...
Thank you, Mr. Hatch. Mr. Davis?
Thank you. Madam Trustee, as Pastor mentioned, it's a daunting task, so hard-fought race. Honorable trustees, again, my name is Jerry Davis, and I represent Holt Construction in the past few months. I know you've seen a lot of me. As I mentioned last time, when I sat in a seat similar to yours, I would wonder why a person would come up week after week to speak on the same issue. And it boils down to a belief. I believe our two organizations can work this out. And I mentioned, excuse me, and I want to thank you for placing our item on the agenda today. And when I say "our" item, I'm not only referring to Holt, I'm talking about this item because it affects the community and the board. The community empower you, as you know, so I'm asking you to use the power to make a decision in favor of the administration going back to the table to work this out. So, that's it. I only worked out for one minute, because I didn't know I was going to have two. So all I have to say is, again, happy holidays and hope you have a wonderful Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. And next, Ms. Matherly.
Good evening. My name is Holly Matherly. My son Titan is a fourth grader in Mrs. Pierce's homeroom at Green Tree Elementary. Titan is dyslexic, but he still scored meets grade level on his reading star. We are grateful to Kristy Rue and Donna Juarez for their early intervention and identification. My family thanks you for choosing the evidence-based learning and choosing to move to structured literacy in UMBLE ISD. We support this because we've seen it work with Titan. I realize that you all did not make this decision lightly, and that it will be a big change for the district. When a corporation makes a change, they use a managed transition to make sure the change is successful. Everyone is educated about what the benefits will be and trained in how to do the new procedures and to do things the new way. As a school district, I hope that you'll do the same and employ a managed transition to get the most from the new structured literacy program. Thank you for putting our children first.
Thank you, Ms. Matherly. Okay, now, the next group I'd like to invite up, Alana Aguilar, Justin Laurie, Scott Ford, and Kendra Hudson, if you'd please come up to the front where Ms. Mount is standing. Ms. Mount, is Ms. Aguilar not here?
Not in this group.
She's not in the room?
I believe you're next.
Okay, okay, that's fine. All right, well then, Mr. Laurie, you're up.
Thank you. Friends, board members, comrades, consulting, yes. In your consent items on this evening's agenda is a vote for your approval, along with many other vendors, is comrades consulting. On their website, they pride themselves as SEL consultants, which is a close cousin of the illegal CRT. They pride themselves as advocates and comrades. One can only guess at the meaning of these words on their website. Did any of you know that you are voting, or at least you are consenting, on firms that bring SEL into UMBLE schools? Perhaps you are only given the agenda with only a limited number of hours to review the agenda items, whereas the administration, or corpus corporate, has numerous resources and time. The admin has manipulated this process into making you into a rubber stamp. Don't be a rubber stamp. You are elected to be critical thinkers. You are elected to look out for the interests of kids, parents, and taxpayers. You were elected to provide oversight. I understand that Tasby states, quote, "Once elected, a school board trustee serves in a body corporate, and the board's constituency is a district itself, not a group of voters." I don't buy a word of this, and neither should any of you. If you want to change the power dynamic and reclaim the lost power, then you must exercise, and I ask you, Mr. Board President, to demand that the agenda be published at least two weeks before your meeting for proper analysis and research. Your job is much more than just approving the budget. Your job is to demand results. It is not to be a rubber stamp. Ask yourself, why are you here? And if being a rubber stamp will help, these kids are hurt. You're the last line of defense they have, so please exercise both your power and your responsibility of oversight.
Thank you, Mr. Laurie. Next, Scott Ford.
Hello, my name is Scott Ford. I'm waiting for the school bell to ring to start. I stand before you both as a teacher and a former curriculum director for a university system. And I understand the purpose of book adoptions. For an English class, it works great. William Shakespeare hasn't written anything new, I don't think, for quite some time. So a book that's five to 10 years old works perfect for an English class. But I teach IT certification courses, and this changes rapidly. Case in point, this is the book that we have that's approved for the Principles of Information Technology course. These are the boot camps that I've been doing on Saturday. This book was written in 2017, six years ago. The certification that we're working on was published in 2018. This book talks about the wonderful new operating system called Windows XP. Should be really cool. Then we have the computer maintenance course. Now, I don't know what book we're supposed to use, because the new books dropped last October, and I dropped $500, $600 of my money to buy a classroom set for my students so we could have the materials that we needed to start working on the certification. And as fortune would have it, we actually have an agenda item tonight for the cybersecurity program. This is one of the books that's being considered. This book was written in 2019, four years ago. The current Security Plus Certification objectives dropped last week. This book's already out of date, but even if this was for the other exam that was written in, let's see, 2020, this book was written four years ago. This book talks about Windows XP and the new Windows 7 operating system. So while I understand the purpose of book adoptions for technology courses and CTE courses, I think we need a different way to do a more rapid and changing adoption, especially as the field changes and our certification changes. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. You raised a good point. We should definitely look into that. Next, Kendra Hudson?
Yes. Hi. Good evening, and happy Thanksgiving, everyone. I saw on the agenda tonight that you all are going to kind of look at the different options for the pass and fail and how it affects the high school students. I am here to show my support for keeping pass and fail, because eliminating this option would have an adverse impact on the well-roundedness of our students. Academic high performers will choose to eliminate arts, music, and sports from their schedules if it affects their GPAs. As a parent of three students, one graduated, one current, and one future high school student, I can confirm they have and will utilize the pass and fail options all four years of high school, the eight credits. My oldest student was a valedictorian and passed, and the fail option allowed her to achieve academically, let her in varsity swim, excel in choir while maintaining...oh, she excelled in choir, and she was All-State Choir her senior year, forgot to put that in there, while maintaining a GPA that reflected her true academic capability. Without pass and fail, she more than likely would not have continued in fine arts and would have added other classes that would have not affected her GPA. By allowing pass and fail, she was able to challenge herself academically, but still have the opportunity to take a few classes that were enjoyable and made her well-rounded. The students that are utilizing the pass and fail options are usually the students that are overloaded in the AP and advanced classes. And pass and fail lets them get to have a class to enjoy during the day. If you take away the pass and fail option, you're effectively punishing academic high performers. They will not choose courses that will hurt their GPA, but that will round them out as students, and that will not have an option to enjoy some of their high school classes. I looked on the chart that's coming out, and you all have some other schools in there that talk about that they don't have the pass and fail. Before you all do any research, look in those schools, because a quick Google search says they have other options, like they give 10-point curve.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson. And just to, so you know, we're not discussing, we're not talking about doing away with pass fail. It's an information item. I didn't want to keep you on pins and needles till way late in the meeting, so...
That's okay, thank you, yes. I just saw it, and I'm like, it's...
Oh, it's great. No, 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 that's great. I just didn't want you to be too nervous.
My daughter's coming next.
Good, okay. That's why I split you up. No, I'm only kidding. Okay, our next group, Macy Hudson, Tracy Shannon, Ashley Valante, and Tracy Chilla. Macy, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Macy Hudson. I'm a current student at Atascocita High School. I'm in 11th grade, and I just want to say how much I've utilized the pass and fail currently. I am what you call a high-achieving student. I really look towards my grades. I run a tutoring business. I love academics. I love learning. I love all the chances I get at school to just improve myself. I love whenever my eyes just like click, and it's like, oh, wow, look at that, I can do this. Pass and fail has given me the chance, though, to have not just academics, but like we've learned in our advisory lessons currently, to have a good school and home life. I am currently an art student. I take Sculpture III. I love sculpture. It gives me a chance throughout the day to just relax, take a deep breath, and do something I really enjoy. I have won awards the past three years in this class. I just, I'm committed to it, and it gives me this chance to sit back and do something I want, while still getting a chance to go to college and get all the scholarships I need to be successful in my future. I have many other students who also agree with this, and if we did potentially go away with pass fail, and just say if we did, or if we didn't keep supporting it, a lot of students would stop using this system. And I know a lot of students, and not just myself, but we all take advantage of this so we can continue just being as successful as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Macy, for coming and speaking to us. I hope you enjoy some of your other classes, too, besides just...
Math.
Okay, there you go. Ms. Shannon?
Greetings, board members. In reviewing the 37-page board agenda that we only got this weekend, I noticed a familiar name on the six-page attachment to consent agenda item I. It wasn't the only name that stood out to me, but it is probably the most concerning. I don't think the board or the public knows anything about the people or entities that are being allowed to mentor students, teachers, and staff in this district. So let's have a short show and tell about just one. This is Megan Mooney. She has said that when a child tells you they are trans, believe them. She sued Governor Abbott to stop his classification of chemical and surgical gender-affirming care as child abuse. Dr. Mooney has some interesting resources on her website. She links to several gender-affirming products, which includes undergarments to compress breasts, male genitalia, and fake penises. Yes, some of the products are even marketed for minors. This is a Packer, suggested for girls as young as three to insert into their underwear. She is a Gender Affinity Board member. This is a camp for trans kids. Children as young as four years old go to this camp. She links to websites for kids to get binders and clothes to present as the opposite sex, some even behind parents' backs. She links to clinics that have provided hormones and puberty blockers. She should not be permitted to provide any services to our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shannon. Ms. Valante? Am I saying your name properly?
Hi, my name's Ashley Valante. I have a junior at Atascocita High School and an eighth grader at Timberwood. And I think Kendra and Macy gave you guys some great reasons for not changing our pass fail program. We weren't sure what was going to be on the agenda about it. We just saw it. I just want to reiterate some of what they said. Both of my boys are very good students, and they're both striving to finish in the top 10%, but they're both very highly athletic and then also into the arts. And so just keeping the program as it is today allows our students to be well-rounded and explore some of those passions that just some of the other classes are on level, and it does impact their GPA. It's just the fact of the matter. So I think you already got some really good information, and so I just wanted to reiterate it.
Thank you very much. Ms. Chilla?
Hello, my name is Tracy Chilla, and I'm here today asking the board to change the current policy of posting the board agenda only 72 hours before the board meeting. This month's meeting has an agenda that's over 37 pages long, and it has... and it has multiple attachments for each item. It's a lot. It's a lot to click on. It's a lot to move through. And it's a lot of information that as just a community member, when you're reading it, it's hard to make sense of it. With just the 72 hours, it's hard to try and figure out exactly where everything is coming from and where it's going. There isn't explanation for many of the items provided on the agenda. For example, this month, a list of vendors will be approved on item I. This item lists six pages of vendors that neither the board nor the public, according to the agenda, knows anything about. It's not specific. So you can just look it up on your own and then from whatever information you can garner, try and figure out why the school district would want to use those vendors because some of it is really hard to figure out why it's relatable. What we want to make sure is that the services are consistent with the core mission to educate children in our community. And we're asking if there could be more time and more information provided to the board and to the public and not to just rubber stamp these items. People before me have mentioned two weeks. I think two weeks is good. It's a suggestion. I'm hoping that you consider making adjustment to that policy. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Chilla. And just to clarify, what you see are responses to bids. Anyone can bid. This doesn't mean we're letting a contract to anybody even on the previously approved vendors list. That still has to go through a process. So I just want people to understand how it works. And it doesn't necessarily mean that we're doing a contract with them. And that list is six pages long, but those are vendors that have been approved, actually, not just this year, but over time. So that haven't been eliminated. Those are people who are on the list that they can bid on a job. Okay. That ends our public comment portion. And now I will move to comments by board members. Ms. LaMond Dixon, would you want to start, please?
Sure. Okay. Well, at first I was just going to say happy Veterans Day and thank you for your service. Mr. Grabowski, serving as a veteran, as a wife and a daughter of a veteran, thank you for all that you do and all the other veterans that are here and watching this evening. Also, I hope everyone has a blessed Thanksgiving next week. But I just wanted to speak really quickly on the sports medicine program. It was great to see Emily Rushing and Bear Rushing and Kennedy Adams. A couple of those students obviously are in college, but they were friends of my kids going through school and just very proud that they are able to take what they learned here in UMBLE ISD and apply it on the collegiate level. Just really proud to see that video today. And that is all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. LaMond Dixon. Ms. Sitten?
Thank you, Mr. President. On pass and fail, since it is on the agenda, I would just say my daughter's a junior and she uses it as well. I think it's, again, this is more of an informational item on how we use it, what it's about, what other school districts are doing and so forth. And as Mr. Scarfo said, we're not looking at getting rid of it, but just to make sure everybody understands it. And believe it or not, it doesn't happen often, but I agree with Mr. Ford in regards to... So I do agree with that. I don't know if it's a... I know a lot of book adoption is TEA-regulated and so forth, but I mean, that does make a whole lot of sense with the way technology changes. If there's something we can do with Commissioner Morath to make sure that that happens, that would be great. So thank you for bringing that up. You know, just some comments and I'll be brief. It's been weighing on me now for a few months. And if you'll indulge me for just a second. I've spent nearly 13 years on this board. I've got 18 months left. And contrary to popular belief, I've stated repeatedly that this would be my last term. My daughter will graduate in May of 2025 and it will be time to close this chapter. In the time I have spent on this board, we have not agreed on every issue but found a way to work together for the good of this community and the students and the staff of UMBLE ISD. I'm extremely proud we never allowed politics or personal agendas to affect our work. I've spent most of my adult life doing what I can or could to promote this community, protect its history, provide a legacy, and leave it better than I found it. In doing so, every decision I've made and every vote I've taken has never been based on anything other than what I personally believe was or is in the best interest of the kids, staff, and community that I'm honored to serve. Some were popular, some not so much. At the end of the day, much of our community have respected the fact that I will always do what I believe is right, popular or not. With that said, it's time for this board to refocus on our priorities. I fully support Dr. Fagan, her leadership, and her staff to continue to drive UMBLE ISD into the future through courage, collaboration, and innovation. Let me remind everyone, she is the one who directed us through Hurricane Harvey, combining two high schools into one. She is the one who focused on our community, the kids, their families, and the staff of UMBLE ISD during COVID. She is the one who fought for families to decide what was best for them in their personal and specific situations. She is the one who allows teachers to teach without fear of failure. I'm personally excited about our future and look forward to what lies ahead for our district and this great community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sitten. Mr. Grabowski?
Well, good evening. I think it's fantastic your daughter spoke tonight. I think we need to see more students right there at that podium because that is our best barometer of how we are doing. I think it's awesome. But that's not what I was going to talk about tonight. I'm going to feed off of Veterans Day. So thank you for the kind compliment and right back at you for your family's service. I know that Miss, I can't say names, service, more service, veterans all over the place up here. I had the pleasure on Friday... Are you back there, Mr. Nazar? Is that you? So I went to Kingwood High School. My daughter is a freshman there and Dr. Nazar put on a very nice breakfast with your veteran for the students. And some were grandfathers, some were uncles, dads, whoever was there. And I got to meet my daughter's counselor and then I got to meet her assistant principal. And I'm glad to report that was the first time my daughter met her assistant principal. So she rolled her eyes when I asked the question, but I was proud that my daughter did not know who that lady was. So Dr. Nazar, great job. It was very well received by all that was there. And then Lieutenant Fuller, who's in charge of their Navy Junior ROTC there, gave a very nice speech on 9/11 and how as a veteran she viewed it because her follow-on service while on active duty was at the Pentagon. And she explained a lot of the emotion and all. And it was just, it was very moving and very well done. So if you could please pass that word to her, too, sir, that would be fantastic. Let me stay on this veteran theme. I've done a lot of flying. I started at 21, I'm 64. I've been up and down a few times. And some of my most rewarding flying is when I get to fly the veterans home from the Gulf back to Fort Campbell, Kentucky. Did it many, many times. And there's nothing like the reception they received. When they get off the airplane, they just don't run away. They get lined up in parade formation and they march through a canyon of people, 15, 20 deep on each side, with flags, posters, signs, horns, just "I Love America" all over it, calling their names, telling them how proud they are of each other. They go walking into a hangar. They stand at attention still. They don't know what put up in the ceiling are balloons and confetti and all kinds of things. So that when the commanding officer, usually a two-star general of Fort Campbell, dismisses them, the balloons come down, the confetti furrows flies all over the place, and you watch people that reunite for the first time in 18 months. 18 months. It's, there's not a dry eye in that house, especially when they got to stand on America for the first time in 18 months and hear the National Anthem. That is tear-jerking. So how do you recognize a veteran? I want you to say thank you to them. Use your name, not mine, but when I meet them, I say hi. It's easy. They'll have a, maybe their name on their hat. I mean, they're Vietnam veteran or some type of service on their hat, maybe on their shirt, maybe their license plate. The ones I want you to really recognize, maybe they have a prosthetic, maybe numerous. Go up to them. Say, hi, I'm Mike. Thank you for your service. It is that simple and it will mean the world to them. I know we have a lot of veterans in the crowd, in our district. I know we have at least two in the front row. Could all the veterans please stand for Veterans Day one more time? Can we do that, please? Thank you. Thank you very much for that. Okay. Sir, are you a Vietnam veteran? Can you please stand? I don't know your name. Can you say your name, please? Okay. Thank you. Can you please stand? Because I want to point out a big difference in our country. It was not the same for this gentleman. When this gentleman came home, people my age and older lived the history, but when they were, if you're younger than me, you didn't. And maybe you know it, maybe you don't. This man came home to a very ugly, angry America. We did not respect our veterans. They were jeered at. They were called vile names. Some were spit at. Some were treated even worse. So when you meet a Vietnam veteran, I want you to add one thing to your greeting. Hi, my name is Mike. Thank you for your service, sir, and welcome home. Welcome home. I didn't mean to make it emotional on you there, but welcome home, sir. You deserve that. We're going to heal this country one greeting at a time for those Vietnam veterans. To all the veterans, I just want to say your country respects you. Your country loves you. Thank you for your service. And to our Vietnam veterans, welcome home one more time. God bless our veterans and may God bless the United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grabowski. And thank you. I had the chance to be at the luncheon you spoke at on Veterans Day. Very, very moving talk you gave. Next, Mr. Holmes, please.
I think what Mr. Grabowski just shared, I don't think it can be topped. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Pass fail. I would love to add that to an agenda item forthcoming. I don't think we need to eliminate it, but I do think there needs to be some things that need to be curtailed. So I'm looking to deliberate on that a little bit more. I do think, again, it has its place in our district. But again, I do think there needs to be some more parameters on it. Do not believe in unlimited pass fail. So again, I'd like to get a little bit more definition. I'd like to discuss it a little bit more. But other than that, again, thank you to our teachers, our administrators, and again, most of all, Mr. Grabowski, I don't think he can do it any better. Thank you to our veterans.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Mr. Kertjoffe?
Who's in charge of the air conditioning? Huh? Does everybody like it? I like it. Huh? Too cold, give me a thumbs down? That's hey. I had to say, it feels good. Good evening. I'd like to thank our public speakers for coming to address the board tonight. And keep coming because we listen and we do take things into consideration. And so thank you. Takes courage to come up there. I want to address, we're going to, at the end of the meeting, hopefully it's not in two and a half hours, but our auditors are here, Whitley Penn. I just want to say we look forward to hearing from our independent auditors from Whitley Penn. As many of you know, UMBLE ISD has nearly 50,000 students and is supported by nearly $500 million in taxpayer dollars. Our fiscal responsibility got us through Hurricane Harvey, a pandemic, and helped us adopt a balanced budget, even though the legislature gave us almost no increase, despite the fact they started with $30 billion in a surplus. When other districts are considering drastic measures to balance their budgets, we are stable. Having an excellent third-party review of our financials is critically important to us as fiduciaries. And as the audit chair, we, Martina, Mike, and I, are very proud to share this excellent news and great work tonight. So thank you to Billy, Dr. Fagan, administration. But thank you to, they're both in the back, and I saw them when they came in, to Whitley Penn. So most of you will probably be gone by the time they give the report. So that's why I'm saying what I'm saying now, before we lose any more seats. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome, Mr. Kertjoffe. And everybody will get to hear it because we got the action items ahead of the consenting items. So it'll be next. Yeah. Right after we're finished, after Dr. Fagan's finished. Read the agenda. There you go. Mrs. Parker?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. And Mr. Sitten shocked me a little bit because I am the first one to congratulate the Eagles and the Bulldogs for advancing. And so congratulations, guys, on football. We're looking forward to Friday night. I, too, want to thank all of the veterans for your service. And I hope everybody can join us at the Oaks Elementary tomorrow at 4:30 for the playground dedication and grand opening. We're really excited about that. And I'm hearing lots of buzz around the district of everybody enjoying the Thanksgiving festivities going on and moms loving going and dads and grandparents loving going to school and enjoying all the Thanksgiving feasts and wonderful things going on. And I just truly want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving holiday and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mrs. Parker. I guess that leaves me next, right? Unless you want to go? No? It's all right. Okay. It's fine. Just real quick, a shout out to Ms. Pullan and everybody in Education Support Services. We had the Integrated Athletics for High School, Middle School a week ago or actually maybe two weeks ago tomorrow. It's always great. It was at the Insperity Sports Adaptive Sports Complex. Weather was a little cold on the first one, but really nice on the second one. But it didn't matter. Everybody had a great time. And I just thank all those people and all the teachers who come from the special ed departments on the campuses at high school and the middle schools for being there and supporting the students. And they just seem to have a great time. Got to go Veterans Day at Oak Forest Elementary. That was a lot of fun. And also I just want to give a shout out to Judy Elliott, Differentiation Identification Specialist for the Advanced Learning and Service Department and Dr. Uticrit's group. She was given an award and is currently involved in a program on Gifted and Talented that Connecticut, University of Connecticut is sponsoring. Anyway, just a shout out to her and I'm sure you guys will formally give her recognition for that. And with that, I'm going to stop other than to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Have a great time next week off. Get some rest so we can push forward those last three, three or four weeks to the finish line till we get to the next break. So have a great time, be safe, and everybody make sure, please, come back. And Dr. Fagan?
Thank you so much. So I thought Mr. Sitten was going to mention this, but I'm going to say it because he didn't. You forgot, didn't you? I'm going to steal it now. So if you didn't see it, and the reason I thought he was going to mention it is because he sent me the article and then I thought myself the next day. But if you didn't see it, Atascida was the fastest-growing community in the country last year, growing by 25% in a single year and reaching a population of 90,000. And if you do any research at all on what brings people to communities, typically the number one reason people choose to live in a community is the quality of the school district and the schools. And so I always like to talk about, when the foundation does their employee campaign, I always think, what's more powerful of a vote of confidence than giving your own money to your school district foundation to provide innovation grants to your peers? Right? So that's a huge thing that I like to measure our success on in our employee satisfaction. But I think this is a pretty powerful metric also to know that we have the fastest-growing community in the entire country in 2022, right here in UMBLE ISD. So I'm very proud of that and thank you for letting me say- So I'm very proud of that, and thank you for letting me say it. I know, I know. Okay, all right. Fair enough. And then the other thing I just wanted to say is, I appreciate the public speakers also, and we have teachers advisories and student advisories, and we love to have that connection with folks to make sure that we really do understand and that every voice is around the table. The folks from Holt, a couple of things I just want to mention is that we started choosing mediators on, I believe, September the 5th. So we have been in conversations for mediation, at least since then, because I know we were going through and striking through mediation, and you guys were doing the same. But the conversation around this is, we're not mediating earlier because the, you know, you all choose to sue us. So that's the challenge of the current circumstances that we're in, is that, you know, obviously, you know, you all bid on multipurpose rooms for a certain amount of money, and any dollars we give above and beyond that have to be because of a change that we've made to that contract in good faith. Otherwise, we're giving taxpayer dollars for things that we shouldn't be paying for. And so, we literally spend every single dollar of the bond as if it's our very own, and we're very, we're tied about that. However, when we do make adjustments or where there are changes through permitting that are unforeseen, like the items that are on this consent agenda, we absolutely step to the plate and pay our fair share of that. So UMBL ISD has been a good partner and worked in good faith. The challenge is that every one of these projects is way past the deadline, even if we started with the very last permit that was received, way past 335 days on every single project. And so, I would just really request that Pine Forest Elementary was told on September the 7th that we needed to dig up a line and show it to the fire marshal so we could have occupancy of a building that's completely finished. And here we are on, let's see, November 14th, and we still haven't dug up that line to show the fire marshal, and we still can't use that building. So, you know, this is a two-way street, and we just really want to work together to get those complete so our students and our staff and our families have access to those community assets, and we can move forward together as we go through this process. So with that, I think that, oh, and I wanted to say, happy Thanksgiving to, like I mentioned earlier, I was at Rosterly Middle School, and everybody was really excited for the break, and I got to hear the men's choir, and they did a fantastic job, and I was very proud of them. So, and their teacher's phenomenal. So, love her, and she reached out on Twitter and said the boys were so proud today. So that made my whole day. I hope everybody has a great break. Do be safe. That's a great comment. And happy Veterans Day to all the veterans in UMBL ISD, both staff, students, parents. And we even have some students on their way to becoming veterans, and we're proud of them too. So there we go. Who come back? Oh, Mr., yeah, Mr. Scarf wants me to just say one last time, make sure you all come back from break. Billy wants that, too.
Okay. All right. Next, we are going to go to action items from closed session. And first up is item 4A, personal recommendations. Mr. Sutton, would you please give us a motion?
Yes, Mr. President. I move the board approve the administration's personnel recommendations as presented in closed session with addendum.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Next is item 4B, student expulsion. Mr. Sutton, again, please, a motion?
I move that the board approve the administration's recommendations of student expulsions as presented in closed session with addendum.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Okay. Pass is seven zero. And next is item 4C, proposed termination of a non-certified contract. And Mr. Sutton, once again, would you please give us a motion?
I move that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation to propose the termination of the non-certified contract of Kristen Garcia for good cause as determined by the board, and authorize the superintendent to provide all notices and take all actions necessary for the same.
Need a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Grabowski. All those in favor? I'm sorry, discussion? Yeah, I'm sorry.
I was just going to ask Dr. Fagan, our legal, who does Ms. Garcia need to reach out to to get further information? I would just like her to be able to have that.
Typically, through Human Resources is where employees who are having a challenging situation, Rick Gardner, Belinda Colby, either one of those do a great job of providing resources and information about what's available.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin Mon Dixon, for bringing. Okay. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? None? Seven zero. Okay. And now, we will go to our, yeah, to action items. Mr. Kurt Chopper? And we are going to have the report from our external auditors.
There we go. Good evening, President Scarf, Dr. Fagan, and members of the board. We met with the audit committee about two weeks ago to discuss the results of the 2023 financial statement and single audit. I do have the manager on the engagement, Brooke Fuller, accompanying me. So she did all the heavy lifting and worked with Jennifer Nance and Billy Beatty throughout the entire audit. So I thank her for her efforts, and I do want to thank the management team for their hospitality and giving us everything that we requested timely. And we'll go through the financial highlights here in a bit. As you know, the purpose of the audit is to issue an opinion. Every entity wants an unmodified opinion. Can you hear me okay? I thought, were you raising your end? Oh, sorry. Every entity wants an unmodified opinion, and so I am pleased to report that UMBL ISD has earned an unmodified opinion. And the reason I say earned, it's because it's truly a long process. We started in March, April timeframe, understanding the internal controls, testing those controls, and which apply to both financial reporting and federal funds. After the district closed its books, we came back in August, September, and looked at the financial statement items, both the balances and the transactions. And we did that all the way through November, including liabilities, all in an effort to issue this opinion here tonight. These are the areas that we look at in a normal audit. We do, because you collect your own property taxes, we do test controls in that area as well, and of course, look at information technology because it does impact all of these other areas. And payroll being the largest expenditure type is looked at heavily as well. The substantive procedures that I alluded to in the earlier slides include analytical procedures. We start with flux and ratio analysis as a basis, then we move on to predictive tests. Then we go into vouching, meaning we're looking at supporting documentation, bank receipts, invoices, purchase orders, and then we confirm with third parties, like your banking institutions and those that manage your bonds. Then we can also download third-party reports through the TEA payment report, comptrollers report, et cetera, to verify and confirm the large state aid balances and also federal grants. So again, you have earned an unmodified opinion. There are no internal control findings related to compliance or financial reporting, and no compliance issues either. The opinion on the federal programs is also required because you do spend more than $750,000 in federal funds, and every year, we select major programs based on risk and also size. Unfortunately, ESER has been audited since 2020, and we will continue to do so depending on the volume of expenditures and what the Office of Management and Budget determines as risky. And every year, they have determined that ESER is a higher-risk program. We also tested Title I, Part A. You are receiving an unmodified opinion over these two federal programs, and we didn't have any internal control findings related to those programs. As far as financial statement highlights, this, you have two sets of financial statements in the annual comprehensive financial report. The first one, your government-wide financial statements, takes a look at your financial statements as if it were a business. It accounts for all long-lived assets, all long-term liabilities, and it gives you a net worth of the district. Your total assets were $1.7 billion, with capital assets making up the majority of it at about $1.1 billion. And then you had cash and investments at about $559 million. You have total deferred outflows and inflows that are primarily related to pension and OPEB liabilities. And then you have your total liabilities at $1.6 billion, with bonds making up $1.2 billion of that amount. Then you have these two liabilities with two asterisks after them at $147 and $81 million, respectively, for the net pension and OPEB liabilities. So overall, the net pension, net position, excuse me, is $137 million. You'll notice to the left of the slide that I included a short note indicating that the net pension and OPEB liabilities do not represent a cash liability. UMBL ISD will not have to write a check to the state or anyone for these. You will continue to fund TRS, or the employees that participate in TRS, at the statutorily determined rates. But again, you don't have to pay this. This is your proportionate share of the statewide liability, and your proportionate share is determined by your contributions compared to the contributions of everyone at the state level. Just really quickly, you'll see what the net pension liability did this year. It increased significantly, mainly because in '22, there were poor investment earnings, which hurt, you know, increased that liability, and also your discount rate decreased, which increases that liability, and your proportionate share also increased slightly. Conversely, the net OPEB liability decreased because the discount rate increased. Again, you see that inverse relationship, and your proportionate share did increase as well, but mainly, the decrease was related to the discount rate, which affects the assumptions that goes into these liabilities. Now we move into what you're accustomed to seeing in monthly budget documents. This is the general fund budget to actual. Your actual revenues of $510 million exceeded your final budgeted amounts by $21 million. Your actual expenditures of $496 million were less than the final budgeted expenditures by $21 million as well. You had net other financing uses of $28 million, which were more than the budgeted amounts by $14 million. Overall, your fund balance decreased by $15 million, but if you remove that transfer out into the capital projects and to other funds, you'll see that you actually increased fund balance. So in the end, your total ending balance of, for, in the general fund, was $211 million. Here, you'll be able to see the general fund revenue components, the actual and final budgets, and you'll see the different tranches that you exceeded the budget in all areas, again, as indicated in the previous slide. As far as revenue, as the different components as a percentage of total revenue, state aid makes up 49% or $250 million, and then you have property taxes at 39% or $196 million. You have local revenue, other local revenue as well. And then state revenue has to do with the TRS on behalf, that is offset by the similar expenditure, exact same amount on the expenditure side. And then you have $8 million of federal revenue, which has to do with your school health and related services. Your total governmental fund revenues totaled $692 million. This includes all of investment earnings, all your federal funds. And so, you'll see here that you have $66 million in federal revenue, or 9%. So that decreases the expenditures, or, excuse me, the revenue category percentages for, reduces the expenditures, the percentages for all revenue categories, once you bring in those federal revenues. When we look at the general fund expenditure budget to actual, again, you'll see that you're under budget in most, if not all, of the categories, again, staying within budget, which is a difficult task, given the large general fund budget that you do have to work with. Instruction and related services, or $314 million, makes up 63% of the total expenditures. And then you have facilities, maintenance, and operations at 9% or $42 million. 60% is student support services, $37 million for your instruction and school leadership. And then I always like to point out your general administration, which is at 2% or $12 million. And typically, a good percentage is 2% to 3% is what we see. TEA uses a cap of 8%. And so, you are nowhere close to that after, even after you aggregate your instruction and school leadership or your administrative cost at the campus level. Your total fund expenditures totaled $792 million, and the majority, you've added $124 million in facilities acquisition and constructions related to your bonds. And so, that, again, decreases all of the other functional expense categories when you add in those governmental, those bond funds and the related expenditures. Now, when we start looking at your general fund fund balance, you'll see that in 2023, it did decrease. Again, you had some transfers out of the $28 million that contributed to that. And the three categories, unassigned and assigned, is always commingled for TEA purposes. But again, you'll see how it's divided in the general fund itself. TEA, again, looks at the general fund assigned and unassigned fund balance for first-rating purposes, but it's also good to compare that to the expenditures. So the Government Finance Officers Association always recommends about 25% of unassigned, but since TEA also looks at assigned, we've included that in this comparison or in this analysis as well. So you are at 41% or 200, the $205 million in assigned and unassigned fund balance, it equates to 41% of the expenditures you had. And so, that indicates, you can also convert that to days, and that would tell you how many days you would, that fund balance would last if all revenues were to cease. You're not in that situation, but this is a healthy fund balance. One clarification, the audit is not letting you know whether you are financially healthy or not. It tells you that you can rely on the numbers presented in the report. However, if you were not healthy, we would present that to you here tonight. Final two slides, our required communications. Again, our engagement letter was signed February 9, 2023. We also mentioned two risks that apply to all audited entities, management override and revenue recognition. We designed tests to mitigate that risk, and we didn't find anything that brought us any concern, nor did we have, otherwise, we would have had findings in the front part of our presentation. We also look at your policies and methodologies, and they are all within industry standards. This year, you adopted GAZBI number 96, which is subscription-based technology arrangements. That was a big implementation across the United States for all governments. So kudos again to your management team, having to incorporate that on top of the ESER funding and all other federal grants and capital projects funds. So it's just a lot of activity happening all within one fiscal year. We didn't have any disagreements or difficulties in conducting the audit, and we assert that we are independent of the district. We did receive the management representation letter, which indicates that management has given us everything that we needed to perform our audit, and nothing was withheld. The second bullet section doesn't mean that you can't have friends at other audit firms. It just means is that if you were to opinion shop, if we had a disagreement and you consulted or management consulted with other audit firms, we'd be required to tell the board. But nothing of that nature occurred. And then anytime that we're asked technical questions, our response is not contingent on you maintaining us as your auditors. We are comfortable in giving you the technical and most conservative response that is required. As far as estimates, you do have three estimates within your financial statement. State aid, because of average daily attendance, that feeds that calculation, as well as property taxes. And then OPEB and pension liabilities, as we indicated, comes as a calculation from the state, at the state level. And then your allowance for doubtful accounts, as it pertains to property taxes, is always an estimate. Any questions for me?
Anything? Mr. Kurt Chopper?
Thank you. Want to let everybody know, Sean Fishon is not here tonight, but we need to recognize her and the great work that she does as our chief auditor and her staff. And thank you.
Thank you.
And you didn't take a breath. I almost interrupted you. If I had- If I had, if I had something, I could have thrown, thrown the towel, but no, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have questions?
Yeah, I have a comment.
Yes.
I just wanted to say thank you so much. The audit committee meeting was fantastic and the work that you guys, it is extremely thorough. Thank you to the finance team and also on Sean Fashawn. I know, I get confused even though she's a friend. Um, but you know, I just wanted to say also from a governance perspective as a board, this is if not the most important aspect of our role, the fiduciary responsibility. So I'm honored to be in company with you and your entire team and Dr. Fagan. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. We'll, uh, move on to our next item and that's, oh, I'm sorry. It's, it's a motion. Thank you very much. Um, we, um, okay. Do you, um, want to present it as a motion, Mr. Sitten, then we could vote on that?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, I move that the board approve the independent auditor's report by Whitley Penn LLP included in the annual comprehensive financial report, ACFR, for the year ended June 30th, 2023.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Okay. Now we can move on to item 5B and it's to authorize, uh, Mr. Sitten, why don't we just go ahead and do a motion and for this and we'll have it on the table.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, I move that the board approve the order authorizing the issuance, sell and delivery of UMBL Independent School District Unlimited Tax School Building Bonds Series 2024, authorizing a pricing officer to approve the amount, the interest rates, price, redemption provisions and terms thereof, and certain other procedures and provisions related thereto and containing other matters related thereto.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Okay. Now, uh, any, uh, discussion, is there any presentation that you want to make? Okay.
Mr. Skarfo, I would assume, um, Terrell's group is, is doing, handling this, is that correct? And they've been doing this for us for how long? I know he changed firms, he opened his own, but how long have they been, been partnering with us?
Terrell specifically or just also the municipal advisors?
Both.
Uh, many years? I don't know.
I mean, I, I mean, I mean, yeah. I mean, yeah.
He goes back to 2000.
As long as I've been here.
Right.
So at least seven and a half years.
Yeah.
So probably the better part of, of over a decade anyway. So, uh, just for those new board members that, that had some questions about who, we, we've got little theretos and matters related to this, that and the other, but I mean, they're, they're competent and they've been doing this for us for a long time.
Yes, and Mr. Skarfo is going to have to sign that resolution too. Okay. Um, any other discussion as we move forward to sell another 150 million, up to 150 million dollars, uh, so we can start to fund the next phases of the, uh, bond program? No other discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Seven zero. All right. And next we move to our last action item, uh, on the agenda. And that is to continue our, the discussion, uh, that we've had previous on, uh, discussion and possible action on next steps for Portrait of a Graduate, uh, make that as a motion. Is there a second? Mr. Holmes, second? Okay.
Well, what's the motion?
To, uh, that we, we're going to, uh, consider next steps for Portrait of a Graduate refresh.
Mr. Skarfo, the motion is to consider next steps? Is it?
Yes. Is that not formal?
Well, are you, what do you mean by consider next steps? I think there should maybe be some more definition.
Yeah, that's pretty broad. It's not specific.
And you know what? At this point, then why don't we just keep it as a discussion? And if we do want to make a motion after, at the end of discussion, we, someone could move to, to do what is we want to do.
That's perfect.
Okay. Can, can this procedure though, if it's an action item, don't we have to have a motion to discuss?
Generally, that's the best practice, but if you don't know what you're trying to move to do, I think that you can discuss first.
Okay. Ms. Parker, go, go ahead.
I'll just move that we, uh, work, update Portrait of the Graduate.
Right.
Yeah. We, we approved that we were going to do that and now the, the next is to discuss how we're going to go about that. So if, uh, Mr. Holmes helped me, we worked on, uh, that everyone has, uh, and that was given to everybody to look at, just as a framework for some discussion. So in terms of what should be our next step? And that's what we wanted to have a chance to discuss this evening amongst all of us. Uh, and as you saw on that, you know, do we, is the next step to do a survey of the community? And you know, what, what would that look like and what topics should be part of that survey as far as asking the questions of, um, the community at large? And as we put in here to include parents, staff, business leaders, um, both from the private and not, and public sectors, um, to get, get all their input. Uh, and then talk about the process of how this would be facilitated. Um, do we get outside volunteer resources? I think they, they were utilized last time when this initiative was first done back in 16 and went into effect in 17. Uh, what level of board involvement should there be? What level administrative staff involvement should there be? Uh, just, these were the topics that we wanted to put out for an open discussion. Uh, because we kind of felt the survey would be useful because if the community is not interested, if there's not much of a response, then okay, I guess there's really not much to do. Uh, so that, that's where we.
And who is we? Who is we?
Well, as I said, Mr. Holmes and I kind of just worked at the, up this framework.
Just wanted to clarify who we is.
I thought I said that at the start, that I thanked him for helping to give us something to start a discussion from. And it says suggested, uh, things to talk about.
Mr. Skarfo?
Yes.
Can I go first?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Um, so a couple of things. One, I want to say since we voted last month, I was a little confused because typically when we vote on an item like this, what we do is we give it to the administration and they come up with ideas and they work through the process and then they bring it back to us for us to actually have this discussion. Um, so that's just a comment that I want to make first and foremost. Um, I feel like we are doing the work of the administration. I would prefer that the administration does the work and then they bring us the different ideas. Um, and just generally speaking, um, I, I don't have next steps. You know, I serve on the board. I don't, I'm not an employee of the district, so I would prefer them to do that. Outside of that, um, kind of what someone mentioned earlier, I think you should have an outside facilitator. I think the board should have absolutely no involvement, um, because we should not sway what that looks like. I think just like when we did it before, there was an outside facilitator that came in and worked with administration and, uh, business leaders and parents in the community, essentially like the Citizens Advisory Board Committee, right? Um, where the board is not involved in that process. We let the community and all the other stakeholders kind of lead what that looks like. Um, but those are my opinions. Um, that's what I think and, um, that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Mr. Sitten?
Okay, Dr. Fagan, now it's my turn to come back and be redundant. Um, so yes, so Dr. Fagan mentioned this, Houston Chronicle ran an article on October 31st regarding the growth and economic impact throughout the Houston area. Uh, it also stated, according to the Census Bureau in 2022, the unincorporated area of Atascocita grew by 25%, the fastest rate of any census designated area in the country. The primary driving force for community population growth is quality of schools. Some will have you believe our schools are failing. If true, why does Umbel ISD remain one of the fastest growing school districts in the state of Texas? Now is not the time to make wholesale changes. I have no problem reviewing Portrait of a Graduate, but to embark on a new study makes no sense logistically or financially. Remember, I think Ms. Lamond Dixon said this as well, we are not to do the work of the administration. We are here to ensure work is getting done. And I agree 100% with Ms. Lamond Dixon's, uh, sentiment that this is, when we vote on something like this, it goes to the administration. Their team comes back with a proposal, comes back with their ideas and then we move forward. That's how we make sure and ensure that the work is getting done in the manner that we want it done without basically dictating what they do. We're here to govern, not to manage.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes, no, completely agree, uh, Mr. Sitten. And, um, thanks for bringing that up. Ms. Dixon, Mrs. Dixon, um, I completely agree. So the framework that we were just trying to work out is exactly that. Just going essentially, um, again, a refresh, as I stated before, um, it's been going on, I think, almost seven years. We've had a pandemic. We've had, you know, Harvey, uh, since then, and we have a new crop of parents, a new crop of students, new dynamics. So again, I think the Portrait of a Graduate is, is amazing, but the body of constituents that voted us here, some of them have reached out and said, I think there needs to be a refresh, which I think is fair. Seven years? I mean, again, there's some kids that have matriculated on and actually graduated and might've even became parents. So I just think it's something that we should do, but I agree with you, Mrs. Dixon, um, I definitely want that, um, to be spearheaded by, um, our superintendent and, and her amazing team. Completely agree.
Mr. Braskew?
When we do Portrait of a Graduate and you look at it and you read it and all the traits that are in there, when a graduate, when a student goes, say, from fourth grade to fifth or sixth to seventh or matriculates any year to any year, a teacher doesn't have how that student has done in all of those traits to pass that information on to the next teacher that's going to gain that student. Like, I don't understand why we give teachers who work so hard to teach their students to subject this type of, I don't even know what you want to call it, information or, it just takes up class time that has nothing to do with TEES. It has nothing to do with how they'll be tested in the future. Does it develop their personality? Yes, but they're going to learn those lessons also at home, at church, on the playground, the cafeteria and other places. I think the teacher should be left to teach. And I think this is when a teacher came up to me and said, they, they keep giving me all this stuff, my word, not hers, to enter into my school day. If I'm a great geometry teacher, but I need my 50 minutes to teach geometry, don't give me 20 minutes of stuff in my classroom every day. It really stops me from teaching. And the other issue is there's no metric anywhere that, what defines what level of any of those traits a child is at? That's why it needs a refresh. I'm not saying do away with it, but it just needs some course corrections, in my opinion, some serious ones and ones that allow teachers to teach. Let's get back to reading and math and fundamentals. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Braskew. Uh, Ms. Parker?
So I don't think it's fair to, um, task the superintendent and the administration with bring us back something. I think that, you know, maybe a vision of what the board has in mind would be helpful. And I think that just like we do committee work a lot, I think it might be a good idea to, um, task a couple of board members to work with the superintendent and the administration. Um, and I think that the, the two that have, seem to have a passion are Marcus, or Mr. Holmes and Mr. Braskew. So I don't know if that's something that we could look at or not, but I'm just throwing that out there.
Um, what do you?
Mr. Holmes?
Yes, um, I, I don't know. Um, I'd be wanting to fall back on some of, um, our more senior, um, all due respect, Mr. Sitten that has been here, um, Dr. Fagan and, um, I believe Ms. Dixon that was here. Matter of fact, probably you as well, Mr. Skarfo. What did we do last time? I think some things need to be a wash, rinse and repeat. I don't think we need to reinvent everything.
So last time, and Jerry and Jamie can help me with this a little bit, but there were about 80 people in this room. Um, it involved parents, students, uh, staff members, business leaders, and we had an outside facilitator. I know I didn't participate because I didn't want to persuade the group in any which way. Um, because even, I mean, obviously anytime I'm in a group, then people maybe just sort of defer to that and I didn't want to do that. So, um, I introduced it and then I left and that was it.
That is correct.
Yes. And, and Ms. Lamond Dixon was actually on the committee because she wasn't on the board yet. Um, and so was Candy Todash and she's now our president of the PTA Council. So there was a lot of people that served on that that could talk about actually the work that was done. But at the end of the day, I think, um, there was, there's some mis, like misunderstanding about it a little bit because the goal was to say, you know, what is it that the Umbel ISD community in all aspects, business, parents, students and staff, you know, what is it that they would like to see the district really focus and do? And everybody agrees in reading, writing and math. I mean, there's nobody that said, don't do that. But the sort of sentiment was around the fact that, um, and we were in a moment of, we had done I-station and our teachers were not really loving that. And, um, and so there was a lot of sentiment around the fact that, um, we needed to make sure we were not teaching to the test, that we were embracing the whole child, making sure that the fine arts, athletics, clubs, um, electives, uh, science, these things were part of the day and that there are districts that eliminate most everything that's not tested. Um, for instance, I had the opportunity to visit with a student teacher from a district, I'm not going to call them out, and she was pretty, um, down on the profession, I will just say, because she said the students who are in grades three, four and five at this particular elementary school have no recess and they spend that time doing test prep. And she talked a lot about different things, that they don't do things that aren't on the test because they have to really focus on the test all the time. And so the sentiment in Umbel ISD when I arrived was really clear that that is not what parents wanted. Um, and so the idea was of course we're going to teach the TEES, that's what we do every day. That's what all of our teachers do. Um, and we focus on literacy early and that continues on. Um, but there was also this sentiment from the business community that they wanted students to have these, what I would call soft skills. And we didn't want to make it one more thing for the teachers. So exactly what you're saying is the reason why it's not more formal. Um, but at the same time, the curriculum and instruction folks did want to prepare rubrics where teachers, if they wanted to, if they felt like it fit, could give students feedback on these skills. And so when I was a teacher, we used to think these things, these traits were more born and not taught, but as time has gone on, really, um, you know, great education folks have, have taught us that most of these, these attributes can be taught, even creativity, that they have foundational aspects and you can build on them over time and that basically the business community said, these are the things that they really want in students who graduate from Umbel ISD. So we tried to put together this picture that of course the core academics are our focus and what we do every day, but when it makes sense for a teacher to weave in, um, you know, these other things like, uh, complex thinkers and lifelong learners and a lot of these things are not, maybe not, wouldn't have been things that I would have chosen, but they were the, that is what the committee wanted. They were personally responsible was a very big thing that came from the committee. So, um, we've tried to have this balancing act where we work on these when we, it makes sense in what we're teaching, um, and that we support our teachers with rubrics, but that we don't mandate anything because we do feel like our teachers are completely busy and there are some that do have the opportunity because of what they teach to do this more than others. And so we support them in that, but, um, to mandate any kind of like every third grader will have this rubric would probably be too much to ask of our teachers, particularly when TEA did send them through the reading academies. I mean, that was a heavy lift for all teachers in Umbel ISD and really the state of Texas. Um, and so it's been a lot. So we've really tried to make this just something that, um, is, is extra, if you will, but still... So we've really tried to make this just something that is, is extra, if you will, but still sort of gives us that whole child flavor. And absolutely, a lot of these things are taught, you know, during band, or athletics, or in a student council, all of that kind of thing, just naturally. So it just works out that way. But Creekwood did a really good job of bringing this group of teachers together and create a project-based opportunity for students to opt into, and they've had a lot of success with that using the POG. So there are examples where it's been successful for some students who maybe aren't connected in other ways, but we're always open to revisiting, or whatever the case may be. I would just ask, on behalf of my team, we like to do things really well. And so if we're going to do a big community thing like we did before, we would need time to plan that, just like we have time to plan the C-Back. We would need an opportunity to, because we lay out all these sessions with these facilitators, and we do, I mean, Jamie and her team on the C-Back, that was tremendous amounts of planning. And all of these folks here had to educate everybody on how taxes work, and how bonds work, and, and maintenance works, and all of these things. You have to educate everybody, and then they do the work. So I'm sorry that was really long, but I just wanted to give sort of an overview of the kind of facts around it, so we're all on the same page.
Okay. Ms. Lamond Dixon, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of also share kind of what was going on at the time. You know, times are different educationally today. This was done, what, in 2016? 2016? You know, we had just come off, this is long before school board for me, right? But we had just come off a time where TEA was saying that each student that was going to graduate would have to take 15 exams to graduate. So me and several other people in this district, including Marilyn Mann and lots of others, two busloads, we would go to Austin voluntarily, on behalf of the district, to fight the 15 tests in order for students to graduate. So you're thinking about that. If you think about the people who were really involved in the district at that time, now a lot of us are on Portrait of a Graduate. So the sentiment, I believe, in that room was, we do not want testing to be all that we do. We do not want teachers to say star, 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 star continuously, and just focus on the test in the classroom. So the mentality of the parents at that time was like, okay, what's important? Let's listen to the corporate people in the room. Let's listen to the business members in the room. Yes, we want reading, writing, arithmetic, but we also want our kids to have personal responsibility. We want them to be able to speak in front of others and communicate well. What are those skills that they need to have? So that was kind of the sentiment at that time. Now, I'm not against redoing the Portrait of a Graduate. Two generations of people have graduated out. I mean, from that time till now, I have four kids who have graduated out. So maybe today, parents want us to focus on the test. Like, I don't know. That's not what I wanted for my children, but maybe that's what people want today. So I'm totally fine with that. Because you think about the number of years, by the time you get this set up and moving, it's probably be about eight years. That's two sets of high school students who have moved on. So I think currently, the parents that are involved today, they see this very differently. So maybe you'd have different outcomes. Maybe there'll only be four instead of six. You know, I remember the gentleman that led that facilitation did say that some districts have four, and they don't have six. But we felt like there were a lot of things and a lot of area that we wanted to cover. I just wanted to share that, so people know essentially what those conversations were like. But I do think, being a person in that room, also know, we leaned heavily on corporate America. What are you looking for when you're hiring students that are coming from UMBLE ISD College and then beyond? What types of things are important? Because a lot of them were saying at that time, yeah, it's great that this person's really good at math, but they can't communicate. So we can't hire them. Or I remember, you know, you know, you know, toughen up, almost. Like, we have kids that are coming out that are super smart, but they end up in a, in an environment at work, that's a tough environment, and they can't handle it. You know, they kind of need attaboys all the time along the way, is the way it was described. So they should know, you're getting paid to do this job, so just do it. You don't have to have an atta boy on top of it. So those are just a couple of examples of things that I can remember from back at that time. I'm totally fine with us moving forward and doing it again. I just, I just think it's the, the job of, should be led by the administration, not by us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I just wanted to say, before we task the administration with doing anything, I think we need to know if there's, in the community, if, if they want to. And the reason that this is, was back on the agenda, because if you go back and listen to what we discussed, and a lot of the same things being said tonight were said at the last meeting when we approved the motion to look at moving forward with a refresh, we really gave no direction. And if, and if you look at the meeting, as a matter of fact, I even, as said to Dr. Fagan, yeah, we will need to talk further about what, what we want to see happen, and how that should happen. And that's why I still think, before we start planning lots of meetings, or getting resources in place, we need to see if there is really an appetite to even do anything in terms of refreshing what we have, because maybe if we send out a survey, and we target it to, to that group that I mentioned earlier, you know, across the district, you may get very little response. And if that's the case, then I don't think we need to do anything, because people are saying, I don't want you to do anything, because I like it the way it is. Or, because if they didn't, they'd be saying something. So I think that would really be, the suggestion is, because we need to give some direction now, at this point. So do we ask to have a survey developed, and I don't mean a seven-page survey, but, you know, one that's short, and maybe we could ask those questions. Do people, maybe, has it changed? Do people think that standardized testing is important? Do they perceive that there's rigor in the current curriculum? These are some of the things that I had shared with all of you, just as things we could consider in a survey. And you ask flat out, you know, do they, do people still feel that there's importance and relevance to the competencies and indicators of Portrait of a Graduate? Those are just some of the things. So that might be the only thing we may want to task the administration with, with doing is, how do we get the pulse of the community to see if, in fact, there's interest in doing this? Because I don't want to put anybody, I wouldn't support, even if other people did, I wouldn't support putting the, our staff through all this time and effort, when there's really no appetite for it out there. Because that's the reason that this really came forward, is Mr. Holmes, and myself, and some others, had been receiving comments from some people that, hey, you know, that's, that's been a, been a while, and, and it just seems natural. That's a long time for anything to be there without taking a look at it. Doesn't mean you're going to change it, but, you know, you take a look at it. So that's what I would ask the board tonight, because we, at the, if you go back and listen, we really didn't give any direction at all. And we need to give some direction, I believe. So if we want to, if someone would like to make a motion along those lines, and, or if, if the board says, we don't want to do anything, that's fine, too.
More comments?
Yeah, we, we, yeah, I just wanted to comment. I hadn't commented yet.
We can actually make a motion and then still have comments after the motion.
Yeah, we can. We can do that, too, and we can continue. Yeah. Yeah, well, whatever you want to do. Okay. Is anybody at this point want to make a motion along the lines I suggested about, do we gauge the community's interest?
I would, I would like to make a motion that we approve the administration to have the opportunity to test the pulse of the community, whether that is in a survey, or in the means that they feel appropriate, and then bring that data back to us in the spring, because, I mean, you can't do it overnight. And we got the holidays coming up.
Yeah.
And then we got February break, and we have March break. I would say probably in April, bring that data back to us. We might even want to have a, a board workshop at that point, to discuss, to discuss.
You started with a motion.
Yeah, so my, so my motion is, is to, is to, is to approve the, the administration and give them, allow them to gain direction and come back to us in the spring with a recommendation on how to move forward based on the data they've received.
Second.
Third.
Fourth. Seven, seven zero.
We haven't voted yet. So, and, and discussion on the motion. I, I do have a comment about, about, but, Mr. Grabowski, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a mixed feeling on this. This is why I feel we're not doing oversight. I think the board should be involved in this process. We can say what we want about real estate and houses and, and all, but let's just look at some numbers. UMBLE ISD has declined in reading from 8% above state average to just above 1% average in the last six years. UMBLE ISD has declined in math from 6% above state average to 4% below state average in the last six years. This is a 10% decline in six years alone. As a district, we were ranked 74th in 2016 statewide. Now we're ranked 58th in 2022. The 2023 numbers are coming out in January. They don't expect to be bigger. We say we don't emphasize it. They're doing right now in elementary schools, interim star. We're preparing our children now for a test they'll take in May for star. Portrait of a Graduate needs to have some accountability for teaching our children reading and math. You want two skills? There's the two best skills we could give our children. Yes, communication is vital, and all the others are very important. I get it. But we seem to be doing all of it at the expense of educating our children. That's why I feel the board should have an input as well, as a part of oversight. So I feel.
Any other comments?
Can you not include two trustees, Marcus and Mike, with, with Dr. Fagan and her team? It's going to go to the spring anyways, right, Rob? I mean...
Well, we, yeah, we, we could do whatever we'd like to do. I would just like to, before the, if, if, if we're going to do a survey, I would like the board to also see what that survey is going to look like before it goes out, because I think it would be, you know, fair to see that. I, I wouldn't want to have to say, well, you know, we didn't ask this or this, and, or have, you know, a majority of board members say that, and have to go do it again. So I guess I would ask, would it be fair to say, Dr. Fagan, that you could have a survey template available, say, at the end of, by the, either end of January or by the February board meeting?
Yes. Jamie said yes.
That we could then look at and say, yeah, go with it. And then we know it's going to take a number of weeks, you know, you're going to take some time, and maybe by the, since February, maybe by the April timeframe, whether the board meeting, or whether we, as Mr. Sitton suggested, and others have, too, you know, we go ahead and have a workshop about that, so that we could kind of flesh out the planning of how you do this for, because you had mentioned at the last meeting, talking about, yeah, we could, you know, look at doing this next fall, you know, in, in the next school year, right?
If we're going to do the full-blown one, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I meant, for, because, but the survey may come back in, in April, and, and we got only five people who sent it in, you know? So I'm, I'm being a little hyperbole there, but I imagine it'd be more than that. But I don't want to create something in terms of work that there's not, or interest in us doing. And if there isn't, there isn't.
Will we appreciate that?
No, I...
But you'd have to amend the motion, because that's not what Mr. Sitton said in the motion.
Mr. Sitton, would you want to amend it, or do you, or I...
No, I, I would, I would like to keep it as is, and let the administration come back in, in the spring with their ideas via workshop format, and then we'll have a better idea of, of marching orders going forward.
Well, when does, what is spring? I guess I...
Well, I said April, since we have holidays, then we have the February break, then we have the March break.
Okay. All right. Then, Ms. Parker, did you?
I truly trust it going to a subcommittee. I really do.
Okay.
We had one, but that was disbanded the last meeting.
Okay, then I would like to offer an amendment that, to the motion on the floor, to say that we would have suggested a tool to ga, to, to gauge community interest at the February board meeting. Not, not that it goes out, not that it is done, but a tool to, to gauge that be presented to us by the February board meeting. You said you could live with that? Right? Okay. So that's the amendment I'd like to make to the motion on the floor, that we go to spring. But I need a second, if, if you want to consider it. If not, then it dies.
Well, I'll, I'll second that. I have no problem with that, as long as the administration's okay with that.
Yeah, that's right. Okay. All right. Any more discussion on the amendment of Mr.?
I just wanted to clarify, so you changed the date to February, but your original motion also said, survey or another instrument. You said it did not have to be a survey. So I just want to be clear that we're giving clear direction to the administration.
That, that is correct.
Okay. So the amendment was just to change the date, and you seconded the amendment?
That, that's correct, because the administration said they could have something prepared for us by the February board meeting.
I just want, yeah, but I just wanted to clarify that that is not necessarily a survey.
That's correct. No, and, and I did say that, Ms. Lamond Dixon, I said, whether it's a survey or some other instrument, that they think is the best way to gauge that interest. But I just kind of wanted to make it a more, more definitive timeframe, and that's why I turned and asked Dr. Fagan. She said that they think they could, they could do that. And that, that's not the survey, that, or whatever it's going to be, it's just looking at what their suggestion that we use, that we come back to do.
Now, let me ask this, and this may be, may have to tweak the amendment a little bit. If we wanted to do that in a workshop format versus a board meeting format?
Well, the president can always just make that decision.
Yeah. Yeah, and that, as, when we said it, whether or not we can also, we can call a special...
The main thing is, is having something to discuss in February.
Right.
Correct?
Right. And whether it's at the February board meeting, and if, if you say, oh, you know, we need another week or to finish, whatever, then we could always hold a workshop if we have to. I would anticipate you probably wouldn't, but, yeah, so that, that would be fine. But this is just really giving some definition to it. So, okay. Any more discussion on the amendment before we vote on the motion? Yeah, Mr. Grabowski?
Can I just ask what we're voting on again? It is confusing.
We're voting, no, we're voting on the amendment to, Mr. Sitton has made a motion, that's been seconded, it's on the floor, to ask or direct the administration, through Dr. Fagan, to present us with an instrument to gauge interest in refresh of Project of Graduate. He suggested that it be, he gave it a spring timeframe. My amendment, that we're going to ask you to vote on now, is to say, let's have that by the February board meeting, if at all possible. So that's what you'd be voting on first, and then we'll go back to the motion as amended. Okay? So there's no more discussion? All those in favor of the amendment? Seven, okay. Okay, so the amendment passed, so now we're back to the motion on the floor with, as amended. And do we need to restate it, everybody, clear on what we're voting on now, as the, the motion that, that was amended? So we're voting on a motion that was amended. Okay? So if there's no more discussion, is there any other discussion on that? If not, all those in favor? Okay, seven zero. Okay, thank you. Okay, now we could move to our consent agenda. Okay? All right, I'm going to read through these, and then, Mr. Sitton, if you will keep track for us. Item A, approval of minutes for the special board meeting held on Monday, October 9th, 2023. That's consent. Approval of minutes for the regular board meeting held on Tuesday, October 17th, 2023. That's consent. Approval of revised minutes for the special board meeting held on October 24th, 2023. That's consent. Bond fund transfers and amendments. E, budgetary transfers and amendments. F, approval of goods, professional services, and non-construction services exceeding $50,000 in the aggregate, or $25,000 individually.
Point of order, Mr. President, if you would, if you would confirm that that is consent, before you go to the next one, please.
Okay. E is consent. Okay. E is consent. Got that one, right? And D, okay. So F, that's consent. G, 2023-24 construction and construction-related purchases. That's consent. H, tax refunds. That's consent. I, approval of RFP 2000, number 2021-006R, educational service consultants.
Pulled.
And pulled.
Okay, that's pulled. J, approval of RFP number 2021-009R, restaurant and catering services. That's consent. K, approval of RFP number 2023-102, services, repairs, maintenance, installation, district-wide. That's consent. L, approval of RFP number 2024-0, 102-20, software subscriptions and web-based applications. That's consent. M, consideration for engineer selection for maintenance renovations at multiple campuses. That's consent. N, purchase of 2.43 acres of real property located on Rustic Timber Drive in Harris County, Texas. That's consent. Item O, deductive change order. That's consent. Item P, change order number one, multipurpose rooms, group three. That's consent. Item Q, change order number two, multipurpose rooms, group two. That's consent. Item R, resolution to elect the Harris County Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. That's consent. And item S, approval of new course offerings at middle and high school level for 2024-25 school year.
Pulled.
Okay, that's pulled. Okay, that finishes those. Mr. Sutton, would you please read the ones that have not been pulled and what is on consent?
Yes, Mr. President, I move that the board approve the consent agenda items 6A through 6S with the exceptions of 6I and 6S.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. All right, all those in favor? All right, seven, zero. Okay, now we'll go back to the items that were pulled, and we'll go to item I. Can we have a motion on, on that?
I move to approve item I exclusive of the vendor listed on page four, line 16.
Okay, need a second? Okay. Any discussion on that motion?
It came up, you know, this is.
Ms. Martin needs to get the motion first.
I move to approve item I exclusive of the vendor listed on page four, line 16.
Okay, and we have a second? It was, Mr. Grouseki was a second?
Second.
Okay, okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, it's five, zero, two. Yeah, two abstentions. Okay, and then the next item is move to approve new course offerings at middle and high school level for 2024-2025 school year. And I need a second.
Seconds.
Okay. Mr. Holmes, I think you had pulled it. Do you want to start or?
Sure. I just have a few questions on, on some of the course offerings. I would like to have a little bit more context and perspective on some of the deletions as well as the additions. Dr. Fagan, is there anybody that could probably help with this? I have the document in front of me, but just have some questions.
Sure. So Dr. Lee works on this and Mr. Perkins. And just a reminder to the whole board, you know, the way that we work on this is courses that students are not interested in and do not choose for quite a number of years ultimately get dropped because, for lack of interest. And other courses that students have shown interest in get added. However, if those students don't actually sign up for those classes, then in our scheduling language, we say it doesn't make. And when it doesn't make, then we don't actually offer the section or assign any staff to it. So one of the things that I'm proud of in Umbelias D is that we offer our students a wide range of appropriate courses, and then we staff the sections that the students choose to take. And so sometimes when we added, this is just an example, when we added middle school dance a few years ago, that reduced sections and other things, and so we just adjust the staffing accordingly. But our goal is always to offer the courses that our students feel are best for them in their, their pathway. So Dr. Lee is here to answer your specific questions.
Sure. So first, I just want to preface it by, I remember when I first came on to the board just under two years ago, Dr. Fagan, you had just introduced, I believe it was a course on becoming a barber. I think that was an absolutely amazing addition to our curriculum. You can see that can build income. Somebody doesn't want to go to college, or they want to go to college and become a barber while they're going to college advancing a degree, they can do that. And I really saw the correlation made sense. Some of these don't, and Dr. Lee, I just want to get just some clarity. So one of them, no, I love rap. All right, I love rap, just like I love Taylor Swift. I like rap. But you have to help me out why we would have this as a course, because I think I've ran across the panacea of what it would take to become a rap artist that actually is gainfully employed. And I've gotten one, one out of a million, I've gotten one out of five million, I've gotten one in a billion. So why would we be offering this course? I don't understand, right? Why would taxpayers want to fund this course?
So I think Dr. Fagan alluded to this. We use a lot of data to decide these, and these courses came straight from student requests. Our student advisory has brought these requests forward to us. I don't know the exact statistics on how many students will become rappers. I don't know how many will become professional football players. But I do know we have students in our district who have become professional football players. We have students in our district who have gone on America's Got Talent. They've been on American Idol. And so there is a great desire for a lot of our students to learn more skills, if they're interested in this, to be successful rather than trying to navigate that on their own without any direction.
Can I see the data that supports the, I think it's called vocal rhyming performance one and two? As you said, it's based on student data.
So it's based on data we collected of student interest. So I don't have numbers of kids. I have, this was collected by students that provided these as courses they wanted. So it was basically just a list of, of courses they wanted to see. It wasn't based on how many interests there were. That is numbers we will be getting in January as we start rolling out course selection to see how many are actually signing up for these courses and interested.
Okay, so this is.
This is sort of the preliminary work. We can't, we can't put out courses for kids to sign up for without having it in the course catalog.
Sure.
So this is step one. And then step two would be if students sign up for it, like Dr. Fagan said, then we would start assigning units of employment to it, FTEs, then we'd start working on all that.
Sure. So like, going back to the barber course, you have to become a licensed barber by the state of Texas. Are there any state therein, right, that you want to practice? Where, is there a certification to become a rap artist?
Not yet, no, not that I've found.
Mr. Holmes?
I'm just asking. I just don't, I'm just trying to, I just, help me out, help me out. Help me out, please. Just asking.
Ms. Lamont Dixon?
I have a couple of points. So I'm going to actually speak a little bit on personal experience.
Sure.
Like I said earlier, I have four kids that have gone through the district. My youngest child, you know, came to me sometime in high school, probably ninth grade-ish basically, and said that, you know, he wanted to learn music production. He wanted to learn rap. He wanted to learn to sing. He already played four instruments. And what we did, because, you know, of what we try to provide for our children, is we got him a lot of studio time that was very expensive outside of school, because there was no offerings in any of these categories for him to learn how to do those things. So while I don't know if he will be an artist in the future, what I will say is when he went to audition at Loyola to major in music production, when he walked out of that room, they came out and said, I would like to meet his parents. He was extremely talented, and offered him a full ride, $175,000 to major in music production and vocal rhyming performance. So for me, I kind of look at it differently. I think that you have kids that want, that can be very successful in marching band. We have great bands. I think we have students that will be very successful in orchestra. And I've had a child that was in chamber orchestra as well. But I do think this is also a way to capture a group of students and have them engage in instruction and be excited about coming to school because it's something they're interested in. So I think of it from that perspective. And honestly, I went to a education conference, what, last week in Florida, at a very interesting school. And one of the things that's a requirement there for all third through eighth graders was that they had to be in a live band performance. So I got to hear a lot of Taylor Swift and Miley Cyrus, Party in the USA by first graders. But they knew how to play the instruments. They knew how to work collaboratively. They knew how to just build an entire performance as a team, which I thought was interesting. And also, and I can probably get you some data if you would like to have that conversation, but I will say that also in this experience, there was also a Grammy voter that was there. And one thing that he mentioned was there are so many different pathways for future careers if the student knows what to look for. So it's not just the, the performance piece. It's also the mixing and mastering and all of these jobs that you potentially could have. So I think it's an opportunity. I mean, and this is before I even saw an email from, you know, you know, emails and reading the agenda, I was like, wow, this is a huge connection that I can make immediately. But that's just personal experience. And I would like all students who maybe cannot spend money on studio time and learn all of these different characteristics to have that same opportunity.
Yeah, it kind of piggyback on that, and then how the, the process works on top of that. You know, I, years ago, I was a coach, and that was the, at, at somewhat of an intercity school. And that was the, athletics was the catch, to get them, get them to school every day. We've got to get them engaged. We've got to get them in the classroom. We've got to, and if there's something that they're looking forward to, they're going to be successful in the other areas as well. I firmly believe that, and that's why we have extracurriculars. But the way, this, this is very similar to course selections when it comes to foreign language. We've got kids that want to take all kinds of different foreign languages, but if, if only five sign up, then the, the class doesn't make. So it's not like you're pulling resources from one thing to another. If, if only three or four people sign up for vocal rhyming, then the class doesn't make. And then there's, there's another opportunity for them to go into another class that maybe has 15 or 20 in it. So that's, that's kind of how, course offerings are there to give, give kids the opportunity, and correct me if I'm wrong, but give them the opportunity to sign up for something that they're interested in outside of the, the core subjects. But it doesn't necessarily mean that there's enough interest in that. But we will potentially have curriculum and all that ready to go. Well, we will have it all ready to go if we have enough students in the spring that say, in the fall semester, we've got 20 kids that want to take vocal rhyming.
Well, and the way, I want to reiterate this, too. The way we set it up, you can't tell on this. We have a flow chart, because we don't want to just put individual singleton courses out there. We want to make sure students have a progression if they're going to go into this. So our, if you visualize this, our goal was to really have people start with that foundations course that's there before it, to learn those skills that Ms. Lamont Dixon talked about, to learn how to market themselves, learn the different components, how to put this all together. That would be year one for students. Year two, they would move into either the, the vocal rhyming or the vocal performance, the rhyming or the mix mastering. So we actually have a little extra time to build that curriculum too, and gain more data that you're asking for, for specific numbers for kids, so we can prepare how many sections that's going to look like as well.
Mr. Scarf, would you like for me to?
Yes.
I know, I believe there was some other people that wanted to comment.
Well, Mr. Grouseki, I thought wanted to talk.
But Dr. Lee just answered. I was going to ask about progression.
There you go.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Mr. Holmes, go ahead.
Sure. So, so Mrs. Lamont Dixon, music production, absolutely. You know why? I was going to minor in music production, I have an electrical engineering background, but they didn't offer it at the college I wanted to. But when you're talking about music production, you can absolutely have a career in that. The career arc for that can go to wanting to be a patent attorney, a lawyer that manages contracts and mastering. So when you talk about music production, absolutely, I see that. And if it said music production, I would be fully on board. But when we're talking about, based on the description that I'm seeing, I, I don't make the connection, because I don't see that this will drive a career after high school. I see that, I know that, they say YouTube sometimes can be the, the great college course taker. People can teach you how to spit 16 bars on YouTube. And what I mean by spit 16 bars, if you're part of that rap genre, you know what I mean, is 16 bars. So I don't, I don't see why, and, and I really want to dive into this, right? And it's not just vocal rhyming performance one and two, but it's a few of the others. As a taxpayer, would I be okay funding and supporting something like this when we're looking at CCMR? How does that correlate? I don't see it. This particular one. There's some others that I'd like to go over, but this particular one, I don't see it. When, when Mr. Sutton brought up Spanish immersion or dual language, there are so many things from a career perspective, working at United Nations, working as an interpreter. Matter of fact, most jobs now will give you a promotion or more money if you can speak dual languages. I can see those things. But rhythm and poetry, rap, I don't see it.
So I think if we look at several of the electives that we already offer, theater arts, for example, we have very robust theater arts programs. I don't think all of our students take theater arts with the goal for that to be their career. They do it because it helps round their education. It helps provide a lot of the other skills they're looking to. And it's a passion for them. And they, they may go on and do private theater as a side hobby. We have certainly kids right now in our district that perform at Numbers nightclub. That is something they're doing right now. And so I, I look at it more as not necessarily a career. It may lead to a career for some of these, just like some athletes may end up going pro, some won't. But for us, it's meeting all those kids and their individual rounded interests so that we can support them as a, as a whole education.
So I'm going to go back. I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Mrs. Parker wanted to speak. You got something to finish? Go ahead.
So I'm just, I'm just wondering, again, curriculum for rap, I would love to see it. And I know that there's the year at a glance, and I would love to see what that looks like.
Well, as soon as we're done writing it, I'll be happy to bring it to you. We have a committee that is going to be working on that over the rest of this year and into next year to buy us some time on that. We all, we'll be working with some experts in the field that can help us dive into what that's going to look like.
Do these meet CCMR standards? Does that particular course?
I think it depends on how you're reading CCMR standards. As far as the state's checklist, it's not going to meet one of those, but neither
As far as the state's checklist, it's not going to meet one of those, but neither do several of our other fine arts programs.
From a fine arts perspective?
In fact, the state doesn't recognize fine arts in CCMR.
Ms. Parker?
So we actually had a superstar speak about this earlier in this meeting, and it was about pass/fail. And so there was an awesome young lady, and she spoke to the fact that sculpting gave her peace and calm, and it was something, when she is in classes with intense rigor, it gave her something to look forward to, to calm her day and enjoy being at school. And so if we're looking at the whole child and being four students and wanting our students to have awesome experiences at school, I think this is one of those classes, yes, it is a CTE class, but yes, those children will be passionate about it.
Mr. Holmes, you and I are working a project, you know that. If this keeps a kid in class, it keeps a kid in class. That's just my point.
Well, okay. Any more discussion, because I'd like to just make a comment as well?
You can make a comment. I was going to call it.
Okay, well, yeah, and we should. It just seems to me, Dr. Lee, that there's still, and I think Mr. Holmes is right, I question some of these things we're offered in this one section, there seems to be a lot of overlap, that we're doing all these things already in our other fine arts offerings. And I just question, you know, should we do it? And it's almost like you're trying to solve or come up with a solution to a problem that maybe is not there, and maybe you should first come back to us with what it can do, what it's going to, you said you're going to talk, now you're going to talk to experts and this and that, but you're asking us to approve this sort of before you've done that. I mean, the other classes that you look at or the other courses that you're offering, those are pretty straightforward to me. But if, I'm not going to vote no against all those courses because these are in here, but I just really think we should think about some of these in the future, that we're just, are we just doing it to do it? And I guess I'd want to really see how many students actually, for next year, when they're doing their scheduling, how many actually sign up for this? And what are you going to do with the teachers who you get? Some of this sounds pretty specific capability. So do you, what do you do with those folks that you brought on that you have to add? So those are questions that I would ask towards it.
Well, the first step is to have the approval so we can actually then do the curriculum work and all of those other pieces. You know, we did this with Martyachi, which we brought into the district, and it's been very successful, but we had to build it from the ground up. And so we love that program, we love that instructor, and so this is the process. So we're happy to bring back the curriculum, we're happy to bring back the student interest, and there may not be any, you know? And if that's the case, great. But, you know, what Mr. Grabowski said, I think, is an important part, and that is if it connects a student to school, that is the key. We know that students who are connected to school, whether it's in student council, right, or if it's in this class, or football, or I go on and on and on. We offer a lot of electives. Whatever they connect to is what gets them there and gets them excited about being there and makes geometry, you know, manageable sometimes. So I think it's important that we offer a lot of things and then let students and their families decide if that's a worthwhile path or not. And then if it doesn't make, it doesn't make. Back to that, it doesn't make, remember that?
That is terrible, yeah. Okay, we've had discussion. I'm going to close the discussion, and I'm going to ask for a vote, all those in favor of the item S as it stands. Okay, six to one. Okay, now we can move on to the last part of the meeting, information items. And I'm going to, looking at time, I'm going to go ahead and move item C, which was the presentation, or they want to do, on pass/fail. I'm going to move that first now. We'll do that, that's, these are our last, we're almost there. So we'll move to pass/fail, and then we'll go to the other two items.
Dr. Lee is back. Thank you.
Dr. Lee is back.
I didn't need to sit down. So this is a refresh of the presentation that we gave a couple months ago on pass/fail. So I'm not going to go as in-depth on it as I did back then, since you just saw it a couple months ago, but give you some opportunities to ask any additional questions you may have. Rusty did tell me to make sure I turned it on first, so that's me. Thank you. Okay. So again, the purpose, you heard from several speakers tonight, I think they spoke very eloquently on the purpose of pass/fail. It's an opportunity to take classes above and beyond the graduation and endorsement requirements without having an effect on their GPA or rank. And currently, we allow up to four credits or eight semesters to be taken as pass/fail, which, we don't have limits on when they can take those, it's just at any time in their high school career. Again, I have to reiterate, it has to be above and beyond the graduation requirements. They are not allowed to pass fail anything that's required in the Texas Foundation High School program, those credits, or their endorsement, which is the 26 credits they need to graduate. And if they are going for the distinguished level, which many of the kids who utilize pass/fail are, they need to keep these other components in mind, such as they have to have four full credits in math, including Algebra II, four credits in science, they have to complete an endorsement in order to be eligible for that top 10% automatic admissions that they're looking for. And again, this is just the process of how they go about requesting that that we discussed last time. So one of the things that we were asked to do is to research what other districts do for pass/fail. So here were some of the districts that we were able to either connect with or find very clearly on their websites. Sci Fair offers pass/fail, but only to juniors and seniors, and only one course per year, and only certain courses, they have a list of them. Katy allows pass/fail if a student has a 4.0 or above, only from a GPA exempt course list, and they have to maintain a B average in the pass/fail or it can be redacted, as well as other eligibility requirements. Klein allows pass/fail, but only for seniors and with other eligibility requirements. Conroe allows it from a small list, and the students can only take two of those in their high school career during their 11th and 12th grade year also. And Tomball, again, also only has it from GPA exempt courses, very specific lists, and only during their 11th or 12th grade year. They also have to maintain a B average or above, or it is redacted in there. And then we contacted several other districts that don't offer pass/fail at all and aren't interested in it at all, from our conversation with them. And then I also was asked to reach out and see what the implication is after high school. So I reached out to several admissions offices, I only heard back from two, but they're the two biggies. I heard back from Texas A&amp;M and UT. And so some of the concepts that they basically said is it's really hard to determine what a student is capable of if we just have a pass on their transcript. So Texas A&amp;M's Director of Admissions replied, "A student who takes core academic courses pass/fail would be at a disadvantage in the admissions process. Typically, one assumes the student was average, or they wouldn't have, they would have chosen to report a grade." UT said, "It's entirely acceptable for a course to be pass/fail if the grades are passing, of course, but ideally, they don't want to see too many because it makes it hard to determine how well the student is performing." In talking to several other districts, or, sorry, colleges and universities, it very much varies how they, what they do with that pass/fail. Some of them strip it down and ignore it when they're trying to decide what a student's admission process is going to look like, some just automatically give it a C rating. So really, if a student wants to know, they're going to have to contact each individual college or university to know how that pass/fail is going to be reflected in that admissions And I just, I feel like the need to throw this out there, we already have some issues that have come up where students have utilized pass/fail, gotten to their senior year, and are almost at jeopardy of not graduating because of missing something. If we explore going above and beyond what we already offer with the eight semesters, we would have to crack down on this harder than we currently do. And this is one of the most common examples that I want to use, is students will sign up that they're not necessarily really in fine arts programs, but floral design counts as fine arts. It's a very common one for our kids to take, it's a CTE course, and it counts for their fine arts. They sign up to take that their freshman year, but then find out we have a dual-credit summer academy program where they could take a fine arts credit in the summer for weighted credit, which would boost their GPA, so they want to take it pass/fail, and we allow that as long as they have shown that they have been successful in their career so far. At that point, if we were offering more, we would say, "We're not going to grant any pass/fails until you have met all your current endorsements and graduation requirements," which would mean you haven't met that fine arts yet, we would not want to move forward with that. It just gets too, too close when we're getting towards their senior year and they haven't met all of their requirements, and that has happened to several of our kids, and it's a very scary situation to have them in. And that's all I have, other than questions.
Dr. Lee, so ours is generous compared to some of these, where they only allow two, we're allowing four already.
Right, it's the most generous I can find, and we don't have restrictions, where all the others have restrictions on it.
Yeah, so we're not saying you have to maintain a certain grade point average while you're taking the class pass/fail.
No.
I thought that was kind of interesting. Yeah, you can do it pass/fail, but you better keep it at, you have to keep it at a certain level. Okay, I don't, Miss, well, we'll just go this way, Mr. Sutton, you've been starting, and Mr. Holmes, and who on this side?
And along that same line about being generous and all that, they don't have to declare pass/fail at the beginning either.
Right, they got two times.
You know, the deadline was just, what, just a few weeks?
October, yeah. We let them see their first nine weeks' grade and then determine if they want to pass/fail for the semester or not after that nine weeks. So we do that for the first and the third nine weeks.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to add that extra piece.
Dr. Lee, can you explain the dual summer credit academy for those that might not know what that is?
Sure, absolutely. So Dr. Uticret and our advanced academics team work to secure a very robust catalog of courses that our students can take through our local community partnerships, and essentially, they can earn dual-credit courses in the summer in various things. Government and econ are probably our most popular ones that students take, typically between their junior and senior year. But we also offer fine arts courses that they can take. We offer, I'm not going to remember them like Dr. Uticret would off the top of his head. Thank you.
... English 1301, 1302, a lot of fine arts appreciation courses. Psychology, sociology, speech 1315 are just a few of them. Last year, we had 1,250 kids take advantage of the opportunity, and they earned about 5,000 college credit out.
Is there a cost to that academy?
There is. So that is something that students pay for, just as they pay for any dual-credit course that we offer, but we do work very hard to offer scholarships and offset that for any of our students who need it, and we work with our counselors and principals to help offset that if students need help to frame that cost. We also historically have taken on the full burden of the textbooks in that, which is quite expensive.
What is the criteria for applying for a scholarship? If you're economically disadvantaged, right?
Absolutely, yeah. Basically, we just ask that they reach out to their counselor, and we work with them to secure the means if necessary.
But I was just wondering, what is the criteria? Is it a sheet, process guide?
We leave that to the counselors because it could be a situation where a student is not identified as low socioeconomic status, but their father just lost their job last week or something. So we leave that to the counselors to work with the students and their families to identify the need, and then they communicate with us, and we provide either partial scholarships or whole scholarships, depending on the feedback we get from the counselors.
Students who are identified free-reduced lunch automatically get free tuition because of fast funding, the fast funding model through our community college. So students qualify for free-reduced lunch already, don't care any cost though.
So, and I think I just want to just tug on the thread a little bit, right? So if you have somebody that doesn't qualify for free and reduced lunch, but has suffered an economic hardship, right? How is that deemed equal across all campuses? Because here's where I'm going. If you have the, if your parents or family, right, have the ability to pay for that, and we now have these pass/fails, you actually have an advantage over somebody that doesn't. So I just kind of want to know what the criteria is on how we administer aid, right? And is it judicious? And that's why I was wondering, is there a process? And how is that vetted? That's all.
I would like to add, too, in our conversations with our community colleges, we offer the most dual-credit summer academy courses of any ISD they work with. We have the biggest catalog that there is.
Ms. Lamont Dixon and Mr. Grabowski.
I was just going to say with pass/fail, you know, based on everything that you've shared and just my personal experiences, I feel like our approach to pass/fail is very generous, and it's also student-centered, which I did not see in the other school districts. So for me, I actually think we should keep it exactly the same. And I think it also encourages some students that may not want to take calculus necessarily, an opportunity to say, "Oh, I can take it pass/fail and try it out." So I think we're doing a fantastic job, and especially when you compare our data to other districts. So just wanted to say thank you. Hi.
Thank you for staying up so late. You know, there's, the only issue that came back to when you and I had this discussion a few months ago, that a mom came up to me about their daughter playing a sport and playing, I think it was orchestra, it's escaping my mind at the moment. And she was in the running for valedictorian, the student, and it became her senior year, and if she was going to stay in the sport and stay in whatever the fine art was, now she goes to on-grade level on those two, and she gets penalized GPA-wise, class standing-wise, scholarship-wise, money, is what it comes down to. That is it possible to construct pass/fail, that it has this ability to help that really high-achieving student that wants to continue both the sport and the fine art? Obviously, they have to have all their graduation requirements, but when you're going for valedictorian, you, these are not your worries, those are all met, because it just seems so odd we have a program that if you're doing really well, you're achieving great, you may make a valedictorian and get, go to a great school with a scholarship, but you know what? You can't play your college, your senior sport, and you can't do your senior fine art because it's going to hurt your GPA. To me, that seems broken, that we're like stripping kids of one of the greatest memories when they're a senior in high school. Is there a way we could try to address that in its own little container? Is it possible even? That's all, and I mean to put you on the spot to come up with a solution now, but is that a possibility, we could like entertain that idea? Is it creatable, maybe?
I don't have an answer for you on the spot like that. All I can say is the other districts that have addressed the issue you're talking about have moved away from calculating electives. They calculate core content and languages other than English only in the GPA and rank, and that's how they've gotten around at other districts. The problem is, when we've put that to students, that benefits greatly the top 10 in the class, and it doesn't benefit the middle, because we have students who are very good at orchestra and fine arts that we've talked about today, and that is their 100s in their class. That is where they get, they excel. So when, if we take away calculating orchestra for them, or we take away calculating theater for them, it's going to penalize them. So it's sort of a no-win situation here, or not a no-win, there's pros and cons to any scenario, I guess, we look at, is what I'm trying to say.
If you had a counselor that would look at the individual student and say, "No, you want it, you want that orchestra to count because you're going to get 100," and then the next student comes and says, "No, you want to take pass/fail in that, that way you can do it as a senior." Two different students could have very different paths.
True, but if we provide different amounts of pass/fail per student, you'd be providing advantage over the one to the other.
But it's courses they're taking above and beyond what they have to, if it's pass/fail, and they want to take extra classes, I think that's wonderful personally. Just hope we can explore that. Thank you.
Mr. Kramer, did you want to? I know we've been around this a lot of times in the past, and...
I just think, I think, Mr. Scarborough, this is my, this is my real house from the lab.
You gotta come over there. Rusty can't hear you.
Yeah. We've had many conversations about this over the years.
So I think historically, Mr. Grabowski's point is a good point, but I can count literally less than five kids that I'm aware of, in all the years I've been doing this, that we had a student that we were not able to work in the process to allow them to take every single class they wanted to take, be in athletics, be in fine arts. It really does boil down to the planning aspect and making sure that the kids that generally get into the top 10, they enter their freshman year most likely already knowing they're going for the top 10, right? So we work very closely with those kids. I have personally intervened, sat down with counselors, sat down with our team. When we get into the... When we get into these situations, I would say to you, there is not a perfect way to guarantee 100% of the kids in number ISD, that based on what they've taken, what their passions are, their interests are, to say, can we put a policy in place that's going to guarantee this will never happen? I don't think we can. But what I think we can do, and I think what we currently do, is we work with our students and their families to do everything we can do to ensure that we give them opportunities to do everything that they want to do. So I, I feel like that, we do a great job on this already. I wish I could say we were 100%. I personally know of students where I've sat down and just said, "We cannot make this work, you're going to have to make a choice." And that's kind of life at times, as well, as we work through. And then just on the pass fail piece, we're very generous in what we do with this, and I have personally spoken to our parent, we're on a personal basis, she's got my cell number, I've spoken to her daughter. We work very closely to ensure that we can do that, so I, I would hope that we would just continue in that pathway, and I hope that, tried to answer the question, but for us to put a policy that would cover that, it's impossible.
Ms. Kramer, can I just ask your opinion?
Sure.
Do you think we should add something like some of those other districts do with requiring a certain, maintaining a certain grade?
No, because, the only reason why I say that is, you give pass fail for that option. I know that the mindset is, and I understand as parents ask me, yeah, I, as a senior, I don't want my kids slacking off, and no, my son personally, I had to ride him all the time his senior year, because he had a 72 in a class, and he's like, "Dad, it doesn't matter if it's 100 or 70, I get credit. So why are you cracking on me for, I didn't study, I made it 82, get off me, leave me alone, because I'm going to get the credit, because it's pass fail." I think when you start doing that, it starts putting pressure on kids, and that's the exact opposite of what we want for these kids, when they're using their pass fails. It truly is a passion for them to do something, sculpture, whatever it might be, where they don't have to worry about making 100. They can actually just be a student and take a class and enjoy it. So I've lived this with our, with our parents, my own kid, and I am very comfortable, as the Assistant Superintendent over high schools, with our current policies and with our concepts, all the way down to financially taking care of kids. I don't know of a family that has come to us that had a need, that we did not find money in the summer, to ensure that kids that truly have needs, whether they're economically disadvantaged, or it just came up three weeks ago, I've had parents pass away, I've had situations. We work very closely with our kids, because that's our, that's our goal, and we want to do that. So I hope, I hope that just kind of gives a little bit of a, from my world, since I deal with it every single day. She gets charged with putting all this stuff together, I get charged with executing it and making sure that our kids are, are taken care of, and that there's equality at every level at every high school. And I stand before you and believe we do that well, but we're not perfect, and we're going to keep trying to make sure we get 100%, okay? Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Kramer, for sharing your insights and experience, appreciate it. Okay, any other questions, discussion on this topic? Mr. Holmes, anything else? I mean, go ahead, we're, we're here, and it's so... And the air went off, thank God.
Air is off.
Praise the Lord, we made it.
I'm not crazy, administration, I'd know it was tiresome. So I think, what I want to know is this, right? In terms of this pass fail, is there at some point going to come a vote on how? I just want a little bit more rigor, like I've seen from some of the other districts, in terms of just having to maintain a grade. And the reason why is, I'm also looking at these CTE courses that we have. And so are we just taking courses just to take them, knowing we can pass and fail, but these teachers are putting in such great, you know, attention and time and effort, but we have students that are just like, "It's a pass fail anyway." I don't, that's what I'm getting at. I just think, again, it's just, just my opinion, it's just my opinion. It's my opinion.
Ms. Sidon, go ahead.
I mean, I hear what you're saying, and that may be common, I don't know. I just know how we're using it.
Okay.
You know, Caitlin wants to major in journalism. And so in order for her to maintain her GPA and maintain her class rank, then her senior year, she has to, she's going to have to pass fail journalism. So, but, but as we talk to college recruiters, we've asked them about it, and they said, "Well, she will have gone through four years of journalism, and she will show a progression." I mean, we started planning in the eighth grade, and not all parents are going to do that, I get that. And that's why we really are pushing the individualized student learning programs, and meeting with, the counselors are meeting with kids early on in order to, you know, my, my goal was, "Okay, let's, let's plan it out for four years." And they were like, "Well, she may change, and she may this." Well, let's at least have an idea. And then we revisit that once a year, because, and then, and then we're coming up with her senior year, she could actually be the teacher's aide in journalism and double-block it, because the local credit like that doesn't factor into your GPA. So, that's, that's how we use it.
Thank you for that example.
And just to piggyback on that...
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Holmes, I believe, you know, I was an educator for a while. Most students who use pass fail in their years of curriculum, they are our best students.
Okay.
So it's not all of the kids that are doing that. It's typically the best students. So even though Mr. Kramer can joke, you know, and say his son, he had to get on him about an 82, his son is a lawyer, okay? So he is a very, very good student. So the students that do that, and the young lady who spoke tonight about sculpting, obviously, she is a very good student. It's not the kids that are, you know, barely making it that we need to encourage typically, which, you know, those are wonderful kids, too, I'm not knocking any child, but just wanted to clarify that.
Now, thanks for the context. Dr. Lee, thank you for the context.
Mr. Sidon.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, that's it. No more discussion on that. We'll go to, Mr. Perkins, would you give us the intruder report update?
Yes, sir. The Texas School Safety Center conducted an intruder detection audit pursuant to updated legal requirements. Seven schools were reviewed. One finding was identified across all campuses reviewed. All corrective actions have been completed at this time. Further detail has been provided to the board in executive session for the purposes of safety and security.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next, I'll just ask, do any committee chairs have any board updates to provide? Okay, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Everyone should have gotten the minutes from the last building and planning meeting. You did vote to approve the two-point, whatever acre track. That's on rustic timbers, to increase the, the size of the plot of land where Sterling Rebuild will go next to Lakeland Elementary. So just so y'all know where, where that property is and what it's for.
Okay, thank you, sir. And last is item D, financial services reports. Any questions for Mr. Beatty? Okay, seeing none? I know, see, boy, that thing makes a lot of noise. All right, and now we move to our last item, number eight, meeting closing, consideration of topics for future board business. Okay, Mr. Grabowski, sorry, first, Ms. Lamont Dixon.
I just, I'd like to bring up the issue of the utili, utilization of bathrooms in the schools.
Okay, any narrower focus in terms of what schools?
While, while summer closed and...
High school, middle school, elementary?
Mostly high school.
High school, okay. Okay, so I know what to ask the board. You want a discussion about efficiencies in restroom availability on high school campuses?
Or the inefficiency, actually.
Okay, whatever, okay, okay. Inefficiencies of, for use of bathrooms for students.
Why so many high school bathrooms are closed during the day? That allows long lines, and that some students need to end up in the nurse's office or elsewhere to go to the bathroom.
Okay, okay.
Not using them.
That's clarified, I think everybody knows. We can't get into a debate about it. So who would like to have a discussion item regarding, or, a discussion item about that, about that topic of restroom availability in high schools? All those who would? No one else? Okay, well, whether I, yeah. Could, could we get a, Dr. Kramer, maybe just a report?
I was just going to say, Mr. Kramer and I would be happy to meet with Mr. Grabowski on this topic.
Yeah, that would be good.
Because I know exactly what he's talking about. I mean, I had a daughter graduate from Kingwood High School last year, so we know exactly what you're talking about, we're happy to work with you on that.
Okay, Mr. Grabowski, is that, okay? All right, and then, Ms. Lamont Dixon, you said you had something?
Yeah, I just, and I want to defer my discussion item to the Board Vice President, since it's pertaining to the president. This is something that I wanted to state for the record and ask for it to be a future discussion item. You know, currently, our Board President is being investigated on very serious allegations. And as we're going through that investigative process, I believe it is important for the Board President to recuse himself in all of those discussions. And I would like that to be a discussion item for us to discuss in the future.
Can we add comment to that?
Ms. Balding, can we go to the back?
We can go to the back for legal advice, we can't go to the back to talk about a topic that's not on the agenda.
I understand, for legal advice.
Is that something the Board President wants to do? Or Board Vice President?
If you think it's necessary.
I do. I do.
Okay.
All right, you want to call us into closed session?
Time is 10:10, we're going to move into a closed session. We are reconvening to open session, and the item that was asked for future board business is to poll the board, was whether or not they want to have a discussion at a future board meeting, as to whether or not I should recuse myself from any discussions regarding certain investigations that I'm involved in. So by a show of hands, who would like to have that item as a future board item for discussion? One? Okay, so, that doesn't pass. So we will not at this point in time. Anyway, so that takes us to adjournment. So at, the meeting is adjourned at 10:24 PM.